Is that, we good? I go with the light means good. Very good.
Well, welcome to planning. We will start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, folks. Again, welcome to planning. We are Feb. 27. Called to order, public comment. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there anybody in our waiting room?
There is. Don't think she has a public comment, though.
Okay, very good. I'll give her a chance. Just so everyone knows that we only have two members present, our third member is attending remotely, so we do have a quorum. And so we'll go back to public comment if anybody online has a public comment. Seeing none, we'll get right to it. We have a continuance of our Holman Street, oh, I'm sorry, no, first thing, sorry, we have a Holman Street tri-party agreement.
So, Mr. Chair, this is a follow-up to the discussion we briefly had last meeting about two properties on Holman Street currently classed as 147 and 159. Previously, these two parcels were part of 150 Holman Street. In the spring of 2001, stormwater permit was filed there for seven developable lots to be constructed as single-family homes. The disturbance greater than acre facilitated the stormwater permit. There were a series of rain gardens and peystone diaphragms along driveways to be installed as part of the approval. The permitter of that, the permitee, I guess, of that development sold the lots off, two to one developer, two to a butters, and three to a third developer. Two of the homes were constructed without the stormwater facilities in place. One was given occupancy without the stormwater in place, an error by the building commissioner. The second of those homes was caught at final inspection that the stormwater facilities weren't in place. In discussion with the builder, I offered that in order to permit the folks who innocently put a bid on the house to move forward and close and not be punished, the town would accept a tri-party agreement for the cost of installing the BMPs at both addresses. I've had a couple of conversations with the gentleman who purchased 159, and he's here this evening. He's of the understanding that the developer would be responsible for completing the work at their cost. We are in receipt of two banker's checks in equivalent to the cost of the construction as reviewed by our peer review engineer. And tonight, we would be looking to have the board accept and memorialize the agreements.
Okay.
And as a final point, both agreements have been reviewed and endorsed by town council.
So just to be clear, this is mostly an in-house thing? This doesn't really require any input from any of the audience currently?
No, but you, I mean, as past practice, you have been generous about allowing and encouraging folks to make comment.
So basically, long story short, we issued a stormwater permit. There was a disconnection between the completion of the permit and the issuance of a building permit, and we're here to clean this mess up. And we have gotten a good way to take care of it.
Yes.
Well, the short term. For the future, we'll need to discuss it at a future meeting on how to clean this up. However, to state a point, the tri-party agreement, we have representatives from, we are one party and we have representatives from the other two parties?
Just one of the other two parties. The third party is a bank.
We don't.
And the bank is really just obliging to hold the funds and, you know, be in...
An overlord.
Yeah, and be in league with the banking laws as written.
Very good. Would the other party like to step up and have any discussion with us? Please? Just state your name and address, that's all.
Yep.
Hey, thank you. My name's Sean Krosick, and I'm at 159 Holman Street. And I just want to thank everyone for putting this on the agenda. I just moved into 159 Holman Street, January 5th, and I knew nothing about the stormwater plans, and I'm just learning about them, that the reason why was there was an oversight from Lunenburg, and I was issued a CO, which I understand. But to my point, the builder had the plans in hand from what I could see in 2021, and they never did nothing about it. So some of my concerns are, they want me to sign a tri-party agreement, which I really want to sign it. I don't want to hold up the sale of the other home, but I feel that by signing that, they have, I've reached out to them on several occasions to work with them and try to resolve this issue. Couple of my concerns are the lawn reseeding efforts, which I think I've talked to you about, Adam. And they have refused to come to the table and, you know, guarantee me either a hydroseed or reseeded lawn when all the work's done, which is concerning because if you go out to the property, there's serious erosion going on right now since I moved in there. It's probably two to three inches below my driveway, and there's all cuts in the lawn from the erosion, because they, I think they planted like in October or November, and it's just really late in the season. The whole backyard is washed out. The front yard's about two-thirds washed out. There's a little grass up there, but, you know, my concern is they told me an email, and I have the email, I can provide it to the town if you'd like it, that they will not reseed. They're not contractually responsible to reseed, which I disagree with because this is the reason why we're here today. So that's one of my issues. My other issue is the CO occupancy permit for next door. If it does get approved, I just feel like the builder's going to go ahead and do, they've already reached out to me and told me they will do only what the town's requiring them to do. And I'm the person that just spent all this money on this house. I feel like I'm owed something, and I'm only asking them for small things here, which is a reseeded lawn, whatever way they want to do it, when all the work is done. And like I said, the tri-party agreement, they had reached out to me and asked me to sign it, and they basically told me an email if I didn't sign it, then the town would force me and take me to court to do it myself, which probably not the best way to reach out, so only you just sold a house. And I've asked for meetings, and I've also asked for a contract schedule to say, can you at least put in writing, if I try, sign that tri-party agreement, what do you intend on doing? How many days are you going to spend on the property? I know, Adam, you had mentioned they were going to do peystone and some rain gardens, and I got the plans with me, so I have reviewed them. Also, on the plans, it calls for gutters, which they have never acknowledged, so, you know, and a dry well in the, you know, somewhere in my backyard, and they've never acknowledged that. So, you know, that's just another concern. They're going to, obviously, if they're doing gutters and all that, they're going to be bringing ladders, they're going to bring heavy equipment in the yard to dig the hole. You know, where does this leave me as a homeowner or, you know, a taxpayer in Lunenburg? I just want my property to be restored, and I want a full lawn that's going to absorb water, because I feel like if I don't get that, we're going to be back to square one when the system's installed, and if the lawn fails, then, you know, we're just not in a good situation.
So I want to clarify a couple of points. You're not a signatory on the tri-party. It's between the town, Benjamin Builders, and the bank.
Mm-hmm.
In order for them to do the work, you have to grant them access to your property.
Yes.
So that's my, again, I wasn't party to these conversations. That's a private discussion between you and Benjamin Builders. My understanding would be that they're probably looking for you to sign some sort of access agreement or some sort of permission or indemnity. I haven't seen it, so I don't know. As far as the lawn, the stormwater permit requires that the vegetation be stabilized. So the lawn, prior to us returning the funds that they have deposited with the town, will require that the lawn be stabilized. We don't mandate one manner of seeding over another, hydroseeding, regular seeding, you know, sod, whatever. However that gets done is, it just needs to be, the grass needs to be growing and the lawn holding in order for that to happen.
Okay.
If they were to come in with a machine to put in the dry well in the rear, and they tore up the yard and changed the grading, we require an ASBilt to be submitted as part of the closeout of that stormwater permit. If the grading is different on the ASBilt than it is on the design plan, they'll need to rectify that prior to the release of the funds. So we're holding a sum of money to cover the installation of all of these things, and some of the things that you're concerned about fall within that, actually, all of the things you're concerned about fall within that purview. The yard needs to be stabilized, it needs to be graded per the approved plan, and the facilities need to be, the BMPs need to be installed per the plan. So without that, this board won't, they can come and ask, but the board most likely won't be voting to release any of those funds back to them.
Mm-hmm.
So, and if we get to a point where it's gone on for too long, the board can claim those funds and have the work performed. Generally, we don't get to that point. That's just no good for you, it's no good for us, it's no good for them, it's just, it's a hassle for everyone. So in most instances, builders that I've dealt with, just go ahead and do the work in good faith. Now, you and Benjamin Builders have to have a conversation about how they gain access and, you know, construction schedule, all of that is going to be between you and them because maybe you have special plans, or you're not around, or you are around and you don't want them there while you're not at work, disturbing whatever you're doing at home. So that's a conversation you and them need to come to as part of that agreement for access. And the tri-party here that the board is reviewing specifically for 159 indicates that this tri-party doesn't grant anybody access and that the developer has to come to you to secure access in whatever way, and that this is just a matter of securing the funds to ensure that the permit is complied with.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not saying I won't sign the tri-party, but what I, when this got added to the agenda, I forgot the date, Adam, maybe a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago, I did reach out to Ally Lorden from Benjamin Builders, who's, you know, been the railtor on the case, and she's been working with me. And I did tell her that I would sign the tri-party, but I think, you know, I think I'm owed at least a schedule, something to say, hey, this isn't going to do the work on your property. You know, maybe they don't have a schedule yet, but the last thing I want to do is sign a tri-party, you know, and one day I show up and my yard's torn apart, so I think that's a reasonable request.
And in order for them to gain access, they have to deal with you. This tri-party, again, isn't going to be signed by you. It's going to be signed by the board, Benjamin Builders, and Fidelity Bank.
Okay, I see.
And then how they gain access to 159 is between you and them, because you're the current owner of that property, and they need to access it to be able to do work.
Okay, because the way I understood it was Ally Lorden sent me an email and said that I was responsible. They sent me documents saying I had to sign it to let them get on my property.
Yes, and that's access. That doesn't have anything to do with us.
So that's between me and...
Correct. That's between you and Benjamin.
Okay. And yeah, though, you know, my concerns are small, I think, but I feel like the builder has been non-responsive, and maybe because they were hoping that the house would sell and the town didn't catch it, would almost happen, and thankfully, it didn't, because I, you know, I would have been on the hook for it. So that's why I'm here tonight, just to voice my concerns. I know that the house next door is being held until this work is done, but now I understand it differently. And, you know, my concerns are getting what I think is rightfully owed to me on my property, you know, per Lunenburg's requirements, and, you know, that's really all I wanted to be heard on tonight.
Very good. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I was mistaken. The situation was a little bit odd there for a bit. Do we have the third, do we have any party of this tri-party agreement here tonight?
Yes.
Would they like to speak? Please, please come up. We're going to have to come back to this.
Hello, everyone. I'm Mitch Lorden from Benjamin Builders. I'll personally be doing the work, so we do plan on the springtime doing the work. We don't have a set schedule, but we will give like weeks' notice when we will be doing that, and I've already planned out the work. There's a, the driveway is right here, and then right to the right of it would be the opening where that rain garden will be, and the same with that swale. So it'll be nice, easy access in and out. And then all the problems areas with the washouts will be taken care of and make sure everything's solidified and that.
Okay, very good. I'm sorry, are you going to be a signatory on this tri-party agreement?
No, I'm not. I'm just performing the work.
Okay, so do we have a signatory?
She is on Zoom.
So, hi, how's it going? Sorry, I'm via Zoom.
That's fine.
So, yes, we actually already signed our portion. Mitchell is a signatory. He did sign off for 147 Holman, and then either of us can sign for 159. So, and if there is any questions regarding, so we did say we'd reach out in the spring because we don't schedule, like Mitchell said, we don't schedule that far in advance, all depending on the month season, when things are drying out, to make as minimal of a mess as possible. And we did put in writing two weeks ago that we would reseed anything that does not take in the spring. So we do plan on stabilizing any slopes that haven't taken from last year's seed.
Okay, now is that for the stormwater functions only, or is that for the previous speaker's lawn, I guess?
That's for the whole lawn. I did put it in an email saying that we'd be reseeding anything that does not take in the spring, because it's also a requirement of the orders of conditions.
Okay. So the previous speaker's issues are going to be addressed? The current issue of signing the PNS is going to be addressed?
The PNS is signed. Closing is scheduled.
I'm sorry, the closing?
Yes.
Okay, so, very good. Are there any other questions that we should ask anybody? We're going to have to come back to this later.
What's that?
Are there any other questions that we should ask?
Not that I'm aware of.
For this official, this oddity? I don't remember having done this before. Do you?
No.
Okay. So I think there is a representative of the buyers. I don't know if you have anything to say. You're welcome to.
Thank you. My name is Matthew Straight from Straight Real Estate Solutions. I live in Lunenburg, and I am representing the buyers who are purchasing 147 Holman, who are here today. They're waving.
Welcome.
I think it's in all our best interest to ensure, as well as the neighbor, that safeguards are in place to ensure this work is done. And I believe those safeguards have been implemented. The engineer has reviewed the plan put forth by Benjamin Builders. The engineer reviewed the budget. Monies have been put in place to ensure that work is done. Town council has reviewed the agreement, and it seems like the due diligence work has been done to ensure this gets properly completed. And it's certainly in my client's best interest to make sure that this gets properly done as well. We don't want to, you know, yes, we want to close tomorrow, and our, and we're scheduled hopefully to close tomorrow, but at the same time, they want to make sure that it gets done as well. And I believe everybody has sort of worked together and sure that that's going to happen. So I vote, or I hope you vote in favor of this.
Very good. I do have one question. Are you going to need this tri-party signed agreement in hand to close?
We're going to need the occupancy permit for tomorrow.
If this is not signed, is he going to be able to get that?
Tim said he would be able to come in and sign it.
In the morning?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I was hoping to come in at eight, because I was told the building inspector was going to be there at eight to hopefully get that, so we can sign off on the occupancy permit.
And the building inspector does not have a scheduled vacation day tomorrow?
I ensured he didn't.
I mean, the only, we are delayed open till 10:00 tomorrow.
Okay. It's snowing, yeah.
Yeah, so, and we'll know by eight whether or not that turns into the offices being closed.
That could complicate things.
It could, well, and unfortunately, the building commissioner lives about 45 or more minutes away, so it's not like he's in town and we could just say, oh, it's easy for him to pop up and we can meet you there and do this.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll call first thing in the morning and see...
First thing being 10:00?
If you want to send me an email at 8:30, I can let you know if we'll be in at 10:00.
Okay, great.
You'll know for sure at 8:30?
We were told that we would know by eight.
The parents have been complaining about getting five-minute emails.
Oh, I don't work for the school system, so I can't help you there.
Okay.
So just to be clear, hopefully, that will be signed tonight by the board?
I'll get two signatures tonight, and I have a third signature to get.
Okay.
But yes.
Okay.
And well, pending the board voting.
Great. And if you need, do you allow e-signatures, or does that have to be signed in person?
Has to be signed in person.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, so do you have anything to input on this? Any questions?
No.
Any comments?
No.
Okay. Mr. Welsmer, do you have anything to input or question?
No, it all seems pretty straightforward. As long as everybody's happy signing, then we go forward.
Super. So how do we officiate this? We just make a motion, get a motion in a second to approve the tri-party agreement?
Agreements.
To approve and/or sign, or?
I think by approving them, you imply that you'll sign them. If you want to approve and sign, that's, I mean, it never hurts to be redundant.
Okay, then I guess barring any further comment, you're not even part of this. Quite honestly, I'm sorry. But yes, I'm sorry, please, please come up.
I just wanted to ask, is it fair and reasonable to request that this be tracked on the agenda meeting? Could I get it for next month, and we can track progress on it as it moves forward?
So you live in the lot that fell through the cracks, right? You've already purchased your home?
Yeah, 159.
There is very little that we can actually do for you through this board, aside from stuff like this. This was an internal screw-up. You fell through the cracks. I'm very sorry that that happened. However, I don't believe there's much that we can actually provide for, help for you because you're actually technically not part of this permit anymore, aside from the work getting done to, and so you've, they have to get access to your lot, I believe, to finish this project?
Correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
So I would expect, if I were you, I would say you bet a hydroseed by lawn pretty darn well for me to sign that. And that's all I'm going to say on that.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Then I guess at this point, we'd be looking for a motion to approve and sign the tri-party agreements, multiple, plural.
I would motion that we approve and sign the tri-party agreements for Holman Street.
Very good. Is there a sec?
I have a second minute.
Super. Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, it's going to have to be roll call. Mr. Welsmer?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Excellent. We will get to signing, we'll sign it at the end of the meeting.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, no, because, yeah, that's fine. Let me, I'll be right back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're, that's fine. Carry on.
Carry on. Carry on. All right, so now we have a public hearing continuance, 3/25, 1325 Massachusetts Avenue, continued from 2/13. If you want to hold off, that'd be fine. And if not, that's fine, too?
Happy to hold off. You told me when to go.
Well, I expect you're going to have a short presentation.
I'm short. But I think Adam might have been drafting the decision, so wait, wait for Adam.
Good.
Okay. Greg Roy, Dulles and Roy, good evening. I'm going to try to be brief this evening. We were here two weeks ago to continue the public hearing for the site plan and stormwater applications for 1325 Massachusetts Avenue. We had a short list of items that we were, that were still outstanding, which we have completed and refiled with your board last week, and I just wanted to recap those as five things that we updated. The first, there was a one outstanding item on the peer review letter that we got from Graves Engineering relating to a type of graphical error that we had on the plans. We corrected that. It was a pipe size that we had mislabeled on the plans as you compare it to our stormwater calculations. That has been changed. The second item that was, I think, raised by one of the members of the board, perhaps Mr. Allison, was that we needed to review the handicapped accessibility parking spaces, and we did that. We actually added an additional ADA space in front of the contractor storage building in the back to make sure that we complied with each section. Each building now complies with ADA accessibility requirements as a standalone, even if you were to consider it a standalone building. Third, we discussed with your board right at the tail end of the meeting, the idea of phasing the parking, and that was to be responsive to what we thought we were going to get from, what we were expecting to get from MEPA. We actually did get that comment from MEPA. MEPA, by the way, signed off just, I think, earlier today, that we did receive the updated certificate from MEPA, so that process is done. They did recommend that we look for ways to reduce the impervious area on site relative to not building the, all the parking spaces. So we did work in the phased parking approach, and I wanted to kind of show that to you. Let me just flip the page here. So we included two phases. So first to note on page C2, if you have this, we expanded the parking requirements schedule to include a phase one, phase two, and phase three, right in that area. Phase one parking is going to be all the parking that's shown on this plan in grayscale. So everything here would be built in phase one. So when this building's built, all this parking will be built. When this building's built, all that parking. When this building is built, all that parking. We included two areas, so we broke out, there's a bay of parking that we had previously shown to be built right here, and there's a bay of parking that we had shown to be built right here. This one is phase two. We identified this one as phase two, and we dashed it, and we said that this is to be built at a future time, should it be necessary. And the same thing with this, with this parking here. So the result is that we are showing a compliant parking plan. We have the number of spaces per year zoning. We're committing that nothing will be built over this area. It'll be graded per the plan. We won't build any sheds or anything. We won't construct any drainage there or anything like this, so that in the future, if this needs to be built for operational reasons, or if the building commissioner decides there's a problem, this parking could be built in the future. But it just takes the curse off, it takes the sort of strain off the site when we really don't feel like, as we mentioned last time, we really do not feel like operationally we need those parking spaces. It was just to comply with the zoning requirements. So that is perhaps the most significant thing that we did to this plan, other than the landscape, and which I'll get to in a minute. The second, or excuse me, the fourth point was, there was a request by the board to add wheel stops or some protection along this slope. We added boulders along that slope. So there's boulders now along all those parking spaces, which separates the spaces to the, protects the parking spaces from the... protects the parking spaces from the, uh, slope, uh, of the D basin, so we did, we did that. And then fifth, I'm gonna flip the plan again, so bear with me. If you remember at the tail, or during the presentation last meeting, we presented a bunch of landscaping modifications that your board hadn't seen, as well as the abutter hadn't seen, um, last time. So this time, the plan that you have memorialized those changes. So just to remind everybody, um, we added a bunch of plantings here. The species, um, that we worked in there, um, were as, uh, as obtained by input from the, from the abutter, meeting with, directly with the abutter. We've worked in some berms in this area, uh, as well as up in this area, uh, so to, to get, um, you know, some, some soil in addition to the plantings there along the property line, as well as some additional plantings in that area there. So, um, this plan was meant to, i- is meant to just bring, bring the plan set up to speed with what we presented at the, uh, to you for the first time at the last meeting. So that was the fifth and final thing that we, that we changed. As I mentioned, we did receive the MEPA, um, certificate, revised, updated certificate. They did not, they do not require us to file an, what's called an EIR, environmental impact report. So we've received what we needed to from MEPA. This will be before the Conservation Commission on Wednesday night for a minor modification. There's a, a few really minor, uh, and really an inlet, uh, modification to one of the inlets, to the detention basin that is inside the buffer zone that we need to request a modification for. Um, and then the only other outstanding, uh, well, two things. The only other permit that's outstanding, uh, or permit in the sense of the word, is a Mass Highway Access Permit for both of the, uh, both of the accesses. Now that MEPA has been issued, Mass DOT will, will commence their review. That process has already been started. And, um, and then finally, we will be coming before you in the next couple of weeks with a, uh, with an A and R plan for the creation of that lot, which you can't really see on this, but this, this section here will be, is intended to be put in an A and R, split off by A and R process, as we mentioned last week. So that's, that's forthcoming. But that's really an independent process to this process. So I think that's all. I'll happy to take any questions.
Super. Well, thank you very much, um, for that information. I believe you guys are going on before the Sewer Commission tomorrow as well.
Are we sewer tomorrow? Sewer commission tomorrow?
I'm not in front of a sewer at this point.
No?
No.
You guys are done with that? That was on the agenda.
So again, the last correspondence with the Sewer Department, we had an email, which was before the, the last meeting, that we were okay with everything that we're gonna do as far as the change of use and what have you. But I have not applied for building permits yet, so they can't finalize
Okay.
that until the building permit application is done.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought you were on the agenda for tomorrow, but...
No, no, I'm not.
Very good.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
So as part of your sewer, and I, I think I know where this is going. As part of your Sewer Commission filing after the building permit, any permit requirements from the building code would be included in their review. So if the building commissioner said you need this widget, or that widget, or this much capacity,
That's correct.
that all gets sorted out at that time.
That's correct. Yep.
Okay. Um, now, a phasing plan, I know, I know we've got fairly, we've, we've got, we've got regulations on phasing plans and subdivision, but do we have any requirements for phasing plans in general?
We don't. Not within, I mean, it's, it's sort of at the discretion of the board. Uh, we have had, um, site plan approvals in the past where the board has granted phasing based on applicant's request. There have been projects where the board has said, "We need to understand what the phasing is gonna be." I think the Bright Farms project up behind, um,
Right, that was.
They, they came and they were talking about building a million square feet, and they said, "But we can't build it all at once, 'cause we wanna make sure that we're stable and we're ready to go, and we have the capital," so they were looking at building half of it. And they came in with a plan similar to this that said, "You know what? We may build half of it, and we may stop. We may build half of it, and two years later, build the other half." And so they made it functional within that phasing. In the draft decision you have this evening, I've included a special condition that addresses the phasing, uh, that denotes what the phasing is, which is outlined on the plan, but gives discretion to the board or the applicant, uh, to require or construct the phasing as determined necessary. So the applicant could at any time say, "You know what? I need more parking." And you have it approved. It's, it's part of the plan. It's calculated within the stormwater. It's laid out in a way that we know makes engineering sense. Also, it says, um, probably be easier to just read what the condition says. That says, uh, "So the site will be constructed in accordance with the phasing plan. The board will allow for phases two and three unless the applicant..." Good thing we read this. "To remain unconstructed." "Unless the applicant chooses to construct the parking areas, or the board with consultation of the building inspector and the land use director determines that the parking on the site is inadequate or creating a hazardous condition." So it does two things. It gives the board the ability to step in and mandate it, but it also gives the applicant a level of understanding of what triggers that, that requirement.
Right. Well, all that based on the, um, on the assumption, I, I remember when we were doing the parking calculations was for, like, one part contractor's garage, not ten. So, and looking at the impact it has on ten rather than one, then maybe we would wanna look at that as well, but, sure. So technically, to gain this permit, they have to provide that much parking for the use that's provided.
That's correct.
That's created. Um, so, okay.
And they have provided it.
We don't have to do any kind of a waiver or anything? We just?
No, because you're not wa, you're not telling them they don't need the parking.
That's fine.
You're telling them they have the parking.
I just don't want the next guy with ten garages to say, "Oh, you guys let them happen, blah, blah, blah."
Well, and, you know, I, m, maybe we do need to reassess our contractor garage parking. I think that if one looks at the size of the building, and one were to look at a company or operation that was singularly using a building of that size for this manner, they're likely to have a fair amount of rolling stock, either company trucks, or trailers and light poles, or, uh, whatever, you know, big machines that they need a place to store. And maybe they're not all being stored in the building, and so some of that parking gets eaten up by that. And I think here, what we have is probably something that's a little more distinct and maybe less common. Uh, I know that in the conversations I had as they were developing this plan, part of the reason this is the direction they went is, nothing like this is really in existence around here. So it's sort of a, a different use than maybe was originally intended under that category. And hearing the original proposal, it sounds like the intent would be that the majority of these would fall within the auspices of a trade shop. And they wanted the ability, in certain instances, to capture a use or uses that might extend beyond trade shop but aren't maybe full-blown contractors' yard, where you would expect to have stock and trade and, uh, material storage bins and that kind of stuff.
Sure.
So I, I think what we're dealing with is a, a situation that maybe wasn't envisioned, but can be, uh, wiggled into
Definitely.
certain silos.
I totally agree with all that. I just wanted to make sure that doesn't bite us later.
I make no guarantees about bites, but I think we're, we're minimizing the bite risk.
No, I mean, as far as, as far as codifying it as a variance.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think what this does is the, the parking exists. The ability to construct it is there.
True, I get you.
Um, the fact that it remains unconstructed is just a monetary or conceptual thought on how one moves through phasing of a plan.
Yep.
And if phasing two and three are never needed, then they're never constructed.
Yep. Well, a, a, and, and one of the things that hap, if, if I may, one, one of the things that happens with these type of arguments, uh, on projects is that you're working on a site that's a lot more constrained, where it's either you build parking, you build more building. A lot of developers are looking, so a lot of times, you're gonna have a, you're gonna have an applicant that comes up for you that says, "We want you to grant us a waiver on parking so that we can build more building." "We're not doing that here." That's why I wanted to be very specific to say that we've, we've, on the plans, and we're agreeing to never build something over those parking spaces, so that it's programmed into the parking space. We're not asking you to waive those in total, so that we can build something else there. We're dedicating that space. We're just saying that we don't feel that we need them. Seven point nine spaces per bay, we think is way more than we need. So we'd like, we'd like to just keep it green space, which I think helps everybody.
Super. One more trivial thing on sheet C three. You've got number eight, but you don't have a note eight with it. Is that just a extraneous number eight, or is there a missing note?
Can I see it?
It's an extra return, I guess.
Yeah, it's quite possible. Yeah. Not a big deal. I just wanna make sure we're not missing.
Yeah, we probably, we probably were just typing and hit enter and then forgot to. There's no, that's not a missing note. It's just an extra eight.
Sounds good. Do we need to make a note of that at all?
We're happy to clean that up for you, if you'd like, or whatever. Doesn't matter.
I don't, uh, we've already put you off for a little while. Um, so I'm gonna open it up to the board, um, and remotely. Mr. Welsmer, do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
Uh, no. Uh, everything, uh, seemed like it was pretty well constructed out, and, and, I mean, hopefully we're good to go at this point.
Very good. Mrs. Reed?
Uh, yeah, I think everything makes sense. I think every question that the board had in the last meeting was answered, so.
Okay, very good. Um, and, um, any public comment? I see the neighbors are here. No? Everything still good? Just thumbs up, thumbs down? All right, very good.
Fair enough.
Fair enough. Um, all right. Well, it's better than a thumbs down for the applicants. I don't know. Anything, Adam?
Nope.
Okay. Um, and the phasing is discussed on, what is it?
There is a phasing plan.
C, C two.
Yep.
And then we, the notes on C two, which is the first spot where that parking shows up, and then we kind of carry through, the dashed on all the...
So C two is layout and materials for me?
Yeah, but if you,
Okay.
if you note that it does indicate phase two, and there is a note there that indicates the phasing.
And then we, but we carry that dash space through all, all the sheets that show that parking, just so it's clear.
And it is specifically called out in the decision what the phasing is, and...
Okay. And, and by the way, if you care, we, we think that, that condition is perfectly acceptable. So that's sort of what we envisioned, is, um, to have the ability for the applicant to construct it, but also a trigger that the building inspector and/or the, your board would have the ability to say, "Hey, there's an issue here. Let's, let's build some more parking."
Super. So anybody, any public on the online? Anybody waiting?
Nope.
All right, last chance, anybody? Board members, um, short of any further discussion, oh, we need to close the public hearing.
Yep.
So, um, we need a motion for that? Yeah. So why don't we get a motion to, uh, assuming that we're all done taking, uh, input? And I kind of assume we are.
We have none more to give.
Uh, I would motion to close the public hearing on thirteen twenty-five Massachusetts Avenue.
Very good.
Uh, and I'll second that.
Excellent. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye, Mr. Welsmer?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. We are closed.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So we're now talking deliberation?
No more deliberation.
Well, deliberation of...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No more input.
No more, no more testimony.
So...
The board is, is allowed to deliberate.
Right. No more testimony. So we have the order of conditions, and I don't see any blanks.
There is a highlighted portion
Okay.
on condition four for construction hours. Uh, currently, it reads seven to five and eight to three for Saturdays, taking into consideration that there are residential abutters.
What were the hours for the earth removal?
You're asking me hard questions now.
Oh, I apologize. We certainly shouldn't go beyond that.
Oh, I think I...
Uh, no, I, I actually, uh...
What are you doing?
Would you agree with that, or would, oh, I'm sorry?
Yes, no, that's, sorry, I'm trying to open it. I have it on here.
The decision? You wanna see it?
Yeah, do you have? I have a Mac and costumes. Okay, hours are supposed to be from seven AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, eight AM to three PM on Saturday, if no pictures on Sunday. Okay.
It looks like there are no construction hours in the...
Oh, was that in?
In that decision.
There must have been, no? For earth removal? Does that make sense that there wouldn't be?
Oh, no, yeah, there's no conditions in there.
We didn't issue it, though.
Oh, you mean the earth removal from the select board?
Yes. Previous construction going on at the very same site.
Well, yes, but you also issued a site plan approval on that. I don't have the earth removal decision.
Site plan of, that's...
You ordered, you issued a stormwater permit and a site plan approval on there previously, as part of the earth removal, because it was a change in use.
Okay, so site plan approval, we should have had hours of operation.
Uh, I think we may have deferred to what was there for earth removal.
Okay.
So I guess that's the question back, full circle.
Well, a, again, it's a commercial, it's in a commercial zone. It abuts residential uses.
Right.
So the hours of seven to five, eight to three are fairly standard for your projects within a commercial zone. When you have projects within a residential zone or significantly abutting residential zones, you've gone anywhere from these hours to eight to three, which I think is probably a bit restrictive. But like eight to four for construction, uh, and then eight to noon on Saturdays. It's really at the board's discretion. I was under the impression that Saturdays were previously prohibited as part of the earth removal. If...
Can I? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, this, it's a point of information. It's, it's a, it's a...
If he says, "Okay, yeah, please come up."
It's, it's a factual, it's not testimony on this. It's, it's a...
So just for informational purposes, the second earth removal, um, extension that we received, we asked for Saturday hours. Originally, we wanted eight to four. They shot us back down to nine to four.
Okay.
So on Saturdays, we're allowed nine to four.
Okay.
Thank you. And did you previously have Saturday as a ability in the first removal?
We did not, at all.
So it was nine to three?
Nine to four.
Nine to four on Saturday? Thank you.
Nine to noon.
Nine to noon?
On Saturday.
On Saturday?
Yeah. Monday through Friday, originally, it was eight to four. And then I asked if we could come in a half an hour earlier and get done a half an hour earlier. So we went seven thirty to three thirty.
Okay.
Monday through Friday.
Very good. Thank you.
No problem.
Three PM Saturday, so... Um, we can't just write "as was previously required for the earth removal permit," right?
Uh, I don't think that's probably the best form. I think you should determine hours based on...
We should look now, instead of every time somebody pulls the permit, which is how often? Okay, so he was seven thirty to three thirty before for earth removal. Okay, so he was 7:30 to 3:30 before for earth removal. Construction is gonna be a whole bunch of different, a whole different crew.
But it's gonna be a similar, it will be a similar level of work. Be machines, it'll be...
Well, it'll be...
Moving dirt.
It'll be a cacophony of noises instead of just the standard. So we're, it's, it sounds like we should already bump up to at least 7:30 a.m. start? I don't know how you feel about it. Why don't you go ahead and tell me what you think?
I would agree with you. It worries me that it's so close to residential...
Right.
And it's starting earlier than we typically allow residential. Obviously, it's not zoned residential, but it is right next door, so I think even that half hour might make residents a little more happy...
Sure.
Next door.
Mr. Willsmer, do you have any input?
Sorry, wrong button. I'm of a similar mind, actually, in, in terms of that, that half an hour kind of being a bit more beneficial for the abutting residents.
Okay. Does anybody feel that we should go to 8? It's, so, let me just rehash. The, the residents that live there, there's no reason they shouldn't have understood that they abut a zoned commercial area. The commercial property, there's no reason it shouldn't have understood that it is surrounded, not entirely, but mostly surrounded by residential area. So, in that case, we try, we typically have, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, we have tried to provide the buffer in the residential, and we've tried to buffer the commercial when it abuts the residential, and not so much when it doesn't.
Correct. And, and you've been, you've taken each parcel in its context.
I guess, I guess was the point. So, um... So 7:30 to 5, does that sound good for Monday through Friday?
Yes.
Mr. Willsmer?
Yeah.
And then, what Adam had in the draft was 8 to 3 on Saturdays, and what we've been told by the applicant was he's previously done the earth removal from 9 to noon on Saturdays. How do we feel about that?
Uh, sorry, as 9 to noon as the actual final...
9 to noon is what the earth removal for the last year and a half to two years has been being performed, and now we're on a totally new project that necessarily doesn't have to do with the previous project. However, it's not a whole lot different to the residents that live there, so with that in mind, I guess.
Yeah, it feels like it makes sense as a, as a reasonable choice.
Which choice was that?
Sorry, if, if they're happy doing the 9 to noon, I don't see why that wouldn't, but it'd be reasonable.
I think it's safe to assume that they're not necessarily happy with it, but they've been dealing with it.
Let's say, I might suggest that the reason I, I propose slightly longer hours is the difference between earth removal and site development is the amount of work you can get done in a period of time is different. Earth removal, you're really just, you know, you pick things up and put them down. Site development, you're trying to achieve specific goals and conditions. And granted, with earth removal, you're trying to remove a certain amount, or trying to meet a certain goal. And I, I appreciate the board's concerns about the residents. I, I wonder if adding an hour on either end, or two hours to the back end, and having it be a five-hour period instead of a three-hour period might provide the applicant the ability to perform work and shorten the length of time that the disturbance happens while still being somewhat sensitive to, to the abutters.
Sure.
I, I misunderstood previously. No, I, I like that as a plan.
I'm sorry, I don't think I understood what you said. Were you just thanking him for his input?
I'm sorry, was that to me?
Yes, Tim, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I was just indicating, I think I misunderstood the first time. If, if we're looking at that, that little bit of extra time at either end makes a lot of sense. Yeah, I, I think that's a good plan.
Okay. And how do you feel about Saturday hours?
Um, I would agree, the additional time, you know, would give them a longer day to hopefully complete that work faster. I, I would say the 8:00 a.m. start time on a Saturday, slightly early for that.
And maybe it's 9 to 2?
Yeah, 9, or even 9 to 3, I think would be fine. But just that little extra buffer for the residents, I think, the abutters.
So, from my experience, the builders like to start earlier. The builders like to start at 7, construction, whatever. 7:30 would give them extra time. The 8:00 a.m., I, I'd like to shoot more close to 9 to noon on Saturdays, and, and give them the extra half hour on the back end on Monday through Friday. But again, I don't know, I don't know how many contractors are gonna wanna do 8:30, 8 and 1/2 hours. There'd be 9 and 1/2 hours. It, it's variable, and basically, the concern from this board is for the residents. So, I, I think, I think we're looking at, at 7:30 to 5 during the week, and 9 to something on Saturdays. Is that what I understand so far from you and Tim?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, I guess we're looking for a cutoff on Saturdays.
I mean, I would say 9 to 3, 9 to 2, as Adam suggested, wouldn't be terrible either. It's, it's kinda splitting hairs.
I was really just looking at, you know, 3 hours seems like a...
Yes.
Really tight window to get people onsite, to fire everything up, to start doing stuff, and then to shut everything down and button everything up.
Right, right, right.
So 9 to 2 would be 5 hours.
9 to 3 would be 6. 9 to 3. How do you feel about 9 to 3, Tim?
Yeah, that, that sounds great. I mean, my, you know, going later, it seems fine, starting earlier seems like an issue, so 9 to 3 seems like a pretty good space.
Somewhat of a compromise?
Yeah, I think so.
Sound good?
Yeah.
So 7:30 to 4, 5, and 9 to 3 on Saturday?
Mm-hmm.
Get that, you got that?
Yep.
And I don't see any other blanks. Was that it?
No, that was it.
Super. All right. Any board members have anything else to input, discuss? I guess otherwise, they'd be looking for a motion to approve the conditions? Is that correct?
Yes.
Or you'd be looking for a motion on the project.
So motion to...
Including the conditions as written.
Okay.
Approve the project, including the mention, okay. I would motion to approve the project for 1325 Massachusetts Avenue, including the conditions as previously stated.
Work for you?
And I will second that.
Very good. Motion second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Please say aye. Uh, I'm sorry, roll call. Mr. Willsmer?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Super. Think you're all set? You wanna walk out with a signed condition?
I'd love to.
He can't.
He can't.
Because we have to give it to the town clerk.
Oh, we've only got 2. Oh, not only that, we've only got 2.
And we only have 2, so we'll sign it, it'll go to the town clerk either tomorrow or Wednesday, and then your appeal period starts the following day.
Psych, tease...
I'll email you.
Very good. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see a familiar face in the audience. Oh, well, so, we have interviews starting at 7:30.
Correct.
And here we are at just before 7:05.
Yes. But you do have a citizen here for Agenda 8, Item B. She is online.
Okay. Agenda 8, Item B. Okay. Very good.
Okay.
I am going to give Mr. Rogers an opportunity to speak if he's got something he'd like to say. Mr. Rogers, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Did you come to speak to us?
Um, I, I came to observe. Excuse me, is the 40B project on tonight?
We have really nothing to do with that. This is, this is planning, not zoning.
I thought that was site.
Oh, I think we're done with that, aren't we? We, we really don't have any more input.
We really don't.
Did I misread the posting?
It is on the agenda as an item for the board to be updated on as necessary.
Because we're, we're nosy, we like to keep track of that.
Thank you. Well, I guess I have to go back and help my wife do whatever she wants.
Oh, would you rather we talked about the 40B? Okay.
I mean, I have, I have, you know, deep concerns about it, but I was, you know, I understand.
I appreciate that you have deep concerns about it. I, I do as well.
What else is left up in terms of, I might ask?
Oh, we have, we have interviews for our RFP coming up at 7:30, 8:00, and 8:30 for the master plan. But however, we do have an appointment that we could take before that, a discussion on our solar bylaw. I think, I think it's Lynn Mann?
It is.
Who would like to have a discussion with us. So, when we're done speaking with you, we're gonna go to her.
No, that's what I'm...
Okay. Thank you very much. Good to see you.
Nice to see you as well. Thank you for all that you do for the town, so thank this job sometimes.
Sometimes, always. Unless you're in the audience. So, we will go ahead, and we're only gonna have 35 minutes before our scheduled interviews, so I believe it's Lynn Mann who would like to discuss our solar bylaw.
Hi.
Hi, Lynn.
Thanks. Hi, how are you guys?
Good.
I really appreciate you letting me speak, and it seems like this is something like out of the ordinary to have somebody coming and presenting like this for this reason. But I, the reason I'm coming to you is I do a lot of work with environmental groups like Sierra Club and Climate Action Now and some other groups, and it's around forest protection. And one of the things that I've become really, really aware of is how much natural land, particularly forests, is being lost to solar developments across, not just across Massachusetts, but across the whole country. But, of course, we're really concerned about what's going on in Massachusetts. And so I, I thought, you know, I don't, I know that you guys did the solar bylaw, I don't know how many years ago, eight or nine years ago, something like that. But I, I just thought maybe, I prepared a short presentation here, and I, I have a few questions, and I'm not trying to tell anybody what to do or where we should go, but I just wanted to raise some issues and see what you all thought of them. So if I could go through these slides really quickly, and then maybe we could have a discussion for a short period of time. This is, I'm not gonna go through all of these points, because I wanna keep it really short, but obviously, we wanna be supportive of solar power generation, but we also really wanna be looking at the amount of land that's being lost. And Mass Audubon has been tracking this for solar arrays, and has found really, really substantial percentages of our natural lands being lost to solar arrays across the Commonwealth. So, yeah, we need to be increasing the pace of solar, but we also can place it more wisely. And there's some legislation that we're really advocating for hard right now to place solar panels and solar development on disturbed landscapes, so that would be like residential and commercial and government building rooftops, parking lots, highway medians, brownfields, any kind of, you know, abandoned parking lots, anything that is disturbed and can't grow anything, that's where we see the highest potential for solar. And we're looking at trying to incentivize that through, through legislative means. You could go to the next slide. I'm sure you guys are aware of this Massachusetts General Lodge, Chapter 40A, Section 3, Paragraph 9, which essentially limits municipal ability to control solar in their own towns. And so, there's, there's also some bills on the books right now looking to try to alter that, but at this point, that seriously have our cities and towns and what they can do to object to large-scale solar coming in. And so what's happening is that a lot of these really big companies are coming in and saying, "Well, you can't object to us putting, to us clearing land on this, you know, agricultural land, or, or forested land, or wetlands, or whatever. You can't object because of this particular law here." And these big companies have the money to bring cities and towns to court and sue them, and the cities and towns do not have the resources to fight them. And so, a lot of these places are actually losing land to large solar developers when they come in. Next slide. This is a report from Mass Audubon, they're in the process of updating it right now, but you're probably very familiar with the data in here. You can find data by area in terms of how much land is being, is in, is available. You can go to the next slide. This is the, this is, these are the numbers for Lunenburg, per se. You can see that the percent of developed land in Lunenburg is only 14%. So we're ranking from 1 to 351 at 218 in this state. That's pretty good. And, you know, it's to our advantage to try to keep that number low, and particularly when these developers come in and wanna take many acres of land for these, for these developments. Next slide. So, so the arguments, a lot of types of solar developers will argue that, well, they're reducing emissions more than a forest is sequestering in carbon, sequestering and storing. And if you do the math on it, the just strictly carbon-for-carbon math, you can justify putting, you know, clearing a forest to put up a solar field. But what you're not, but what those calculations don't account for is the carbon that's in the soil and the other types of life, biodiversity that lives in the soil that subsequently dries out and goes away. There's also a lot of carbon in the atmosphere, and we need to be sequestering carbon out of the atmosphere. The only thing that can do that right now really is forests and wetlands, our, our natural lands. We don't have any technology that's gonna be sequestering carbon out of the atmosphere. So, so just reducing emissions is, is, is great, and we need to be doing it, but we also need to be protecting the very land that can, that can sequester carbon from the atmosphere. We're also looking at biodiversity, it is at crisis levels. There's a quote, I can't remember who it was, but, you know, if we, if we... I'm, I'm gonna leave that quote. We also wanna look at land use affecting those who are beyond the property lines, and I have a couple of photos of that. I know that you guys are very well aware of this, and that's what you were just talking about, the, you know, the previous projects, is how, how does land use affect abutters and people beyond those lands? And so that obviously applies for solar as well. Next slide. I'm not gonna go through these. If you want to, I've got links on these. These are all examples of solar projects in cities and towns that have gone terribly wrong, and really destroyed a lot of, a lot of natural lands in these cities and towns. You can go to the next slide, and there's a couple of photos. I'm sorry, this is so fuzzy, this is in Williamsburg, downstream from a solar farm where the water runoff has just caused a huge amount of erosion. There's another one out in Western Mass where the, it destroyed a farm downstream from it. This is out on the Cape in Carver, where pine barrens, which is a very fragile ecosystem, have been cleared. It's a very rare ecosystem, because it's built on, it, it grows out of a very sandy soil, so this is... So this is silica sand, which there's a very, very high market value for. So they strip the forest, and then they're, they're mining all the sand, and then they replace whatever's left with solar panels. So you have this huge hot, you've completely destroyed that landscape. It'll never come back. And you have this big hotspot in the middle of it. Next slide. So, so I just want to bring attention to Lunenburg. I've seen, I'm seeing this stuff all over the whole state. And I live in Lunenburg, and I just want to make sure that we are protected. And I'm, you know, obviously leaving it to you guys to make sure of that, but just sort of bringing my concerns in general. Obviously, we want to promote smart, equitable, and community-based solar. You know, that's part of, part of our sort of ethos in trying to have a green economy and so forth. But we also want to protect what we have as beautiful natural and agricultural landscapes in Lunenburg that are worthy of protecting. So we need this for climate resilience. We need it for biodiversity. We need it for our own human health as well. I can go through all of these things that happen. I think you know what happens. We'll just go to the next slide. When you cut down a forest. We could go to the next slide. So I went and looked at, Adam referred me to the Lunenburg Solar Bylaw, and I'm really not good at reading bylaws. Like, this is not my, something I've done a lot of. And so I read this over several times to try to get the gist of what it was saying. But what I, there were two things in it that caught my attention, and I don't know what you guys are going to think of it, but it just, they just caught my attention. I thought I'd bring it up to you. One is the solar overlay district. There were three properties that were named as, as the solar overlay district that are listed here. I'll go through them one at a time, so we can go to the next slide. So if you go to the SMART, the DOER SMART site, they have these evaluation tools, and you can plot out on the SMART site where, where the properties are in your city or town. You can just put in any address. So I put them in here, and it looks like, from the DOER website, it looks like two of them are located sort of at the edges of Article 97 property. And one is sort of at the edge of an NAGESP BioMap Two, a priority habitat property. It's hard to tell on this kind of a map how close that is. And not knowing the area, really exactly where those are, I wouldn't really be qualified to say whether those were sensitive areas or not. But I did go, you can go to the next slide. I did go to the BioMap Two itself, which actually now is BioMap Three, and put them into the BioMap myself. So this was the 27 Youngs Road parcel. And you can see it's not anywhere close, on the BioMap, it's not close to core habitat or critical natural landscape, which is a little bit different than on the DOER website, and I don't understand that. But when we get to the next two properties, it looks a little different. This one, the 671 Lancaster Ave, is right on the edge of a critical natural landscape area that's designated in, in BioMap Two or Three. And then the next one, the last one, is 500 Leominster Shirley Road, which is sort of like right in the middle of a core habitat area. So, so in looking at these parcels, to me, it looked like the Youngs, Youngs Road one looked fine. I think Adam may have told me that that's actually the old landfill, the Lunenburg landfill. I'm not actually sure. Adam, you could correct me if I'm wrong. But these other two, I would just, I would just like to see a review of those and see whether, you know, there's, because they're listed as solar overlays, they're really, a solar company could easily come in and, and take those and build on them. And we wouldn't be able to defend that in court if we said no. So, next slide. So the other area that I had wanted to take a look at was in the decommissioning. Oh, no, I'm sorry, this was in, I guess there's three areas. This was just in the standards that are set out here. And I think these are probably boilerplate standards that are in this bylaw. That's what it looks like to me because this is consistent with the MGL 40A, Section Three, Paragraph Nine. But there is no provision in, in the standards for protection of ecosystems. And I would hope that we could put something into the bylaw that would specifically have some kind of language around protecting ecosystems. Because from what I've heard, if that's not already in your bylaw, then that gives the, if they come in and try to take that land, it gives them further justification. Because you can't come in when they, when they say, when a solar developer tries to sue you because, you know, to, to take a parcel of land for solar development, you can't then all of a sudden change your bylaw, so now that parcel is excluded. So if we can kind of look at that and see whether we feel that we're adequately protected, that would be great. Next slide. And then the last point was around decommissioning of solar, of solar installations. And in the current bylaw, it says that the, it shall be considered abandoned when it fails to operate for more than one year without the written consent of the planning board. So in my mind, not understanding the law like you guys do, but when I read that, it looks to me like they could be long gone. They could be gone for a year. And then, you know, and they have a year to be gone before you guys can go after them. And so I don't know if there's, if that's at all problematic and whether that could be fixed. And then the other thing is also highlighted down here is that if they fail to remove it, then you can go after them, you know, with a court order, and that they have to pay for it. But if they're already gone for a year, how is the town of Lunenburg going to pay for this decommissioning and the removal of all of this stuff and the restoration of the land if that developer isn't around anymore? I, I have read some other bylaws in other towns. And one of the things that they, that they put into their bylaws to protect against this is they get those costs upfront. So there's, in the bylaw, they would have to get an escrow account or something upfront to, to reserve the money for decommissioning. And that would protect the town from possibly being stuck with that cost, you know, 20 years later. So next slide. So, so my questions to you guys. One, should the solar overlays be revisited? I don't know the answer to this. I just put it out there for your consideration. There may be some, some things about this that I don't know that would, that you guys would say, no, it's fine. But if so, I would really love to know what those, what those things are, just so that I understand. And then what are the standards for the special permits? Are they specific enough to protect? And that's the part about putting in a clause about protecting ecosystems. And then looking at whether the decommissioning language is strong enough to protect the town from costs of decommissioning. I don't know whether you all would be the only ones to look at this. Or I have heard from other towns that when they're rewriting their solar bylaws, they, they get a lot of other committees and commissions from the town involved. So even, even the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, obviously, zoning. I, I don't, I don't know who else would be involved in that. But I have heard that, you know, most of the other departments get involved in these, in these kinds of discussions. And then finally, is it possible for us to look for, you know, where would we want, where would we really want solar installations to go in the town? And what kinds of disturbed landscapes are available, whether it's residential housing or commercial or abandoned properties in other areas or what? So that if we have, if we, if we already have that as solar overlays, then we can say this is what's available in this town. And that probably would provide us with more protection. So we can look at model solar bylaws in other communities. I started to look at some of these, but I really wanted to get your thoughts before. I put a lot of time into that. Also, obviously, you guys know this, that the SMART regs are always changing. They're super, super hard to keep up with. I have a very difficult time understanding them to begin with. So I would hope somebody in the town understands SMART regulations better than me. And, and obviously, it's not just solar panels, but it could include wind. I don't know whether we have any area in Lunenburg that would be suitable for wind, but certainly battery storage, substations, and other infrastructure associated with solar should be considered in there too. A lot of, a lot of towns are struggling with the battery storage in particular because there are a lot of issues around, I think the biggest one that I've seen is around fire, you know, that they're susceptible to fire. And if that, when, if and when they do catch fire, they're apparently extremely difficult to put out. And you need to plan for the resources, to have the resources available for that in that instant. So I think that's, is that the last slide, Adam? Yeah, this is just for your information. There's some solar legislation that's been filed. We're most excited about the very last one. The first have to do with the MGL 40A. But the last one is the one that would incentivize building solar on disturbed landscapes. That was one that was, that was written by a colleague of mine at Sierra Club. And he's proposing to lift the limits on net metering, which I think are capped right now. I can't remember the amount, but it would like make it five times more than what it is, which the solar developers, this was developed in, this, this bill was developed in conjunction with solar developers, legislators, environmentalists. So there's, there's like, nobody's, the only people who would object to this bill really are utilities. But it, it removes, it removes some of the caps and the barriers to incentivizing this type of construction. So I think that's all, and I just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Super. Well, thank you, Lynn. We have five minutes until our next, our scheduled appointment. So first off, thank you for that. And let me give you a little bit of history. I think it was six or eight years ago that we started, and it took a couple of years. No?
No, it's been a decade or so since the solar bylaw was put in place. Because it predates me.
That's old.
That is. Well, I'll tell you what. I remember, I remember being on the committee when we wrote it. And I remember also having two new members. And they were not shy about specifically stating that they were against solar. And that was their reasoning for joining, I believe, initially. So I, I can almost guarantee you that, I can almost guarantee you that our solar bylaw is as strict as it could be at that time, minus maybe a few increments. But I'll also say that that is something, one of the numerous things that have been shoved down our throat by the state. We had no choice. I believe that we were forced to zone for, specifically zone for, solar because we could not have it not listed in a use, so therefore not allowed in town. We could not.
Are you, are you saying, Matt, I'm sorry, are you saying that you had to come up with solar overlays? Is that, because I'm not that familiar with the language. Is that what you're saying?
When the state determines that we need to do something that they want to do, then they dictate to us how we have to do it. They give us very small parameters in which to do it. Currently, right now, the MBTA zoning is the perfect example of that. We have Home Rule. We are supposed to be able to dictate what we do in our town, but no. All this, all this trickle-down. So, and, and I don't believe that we had foam. So to put the fires out, you have to have a foam-capable fire apparatus. I don't believe that we had any of that prior to when we zoned for it. I do believe that we have since gotten it. I'm not positive of that. So I mentioned the two new members. I mentioned the state down our throat, and I mentioned the foam. So those are the three things that I thought of to mention to you. Adam, do you?
I, I think some of the things that, the, the solar overlays, developers can't just take them. They're municipal and utility-owned properties. I think your point about them being within, two of three being within sensitive areas is, is well-taken. And it may be appropriate for the board to revisit that at some point. I think looking at the approval criteria and adding the protection of ecosystems to that criteria would give the board, again, additional teeth when it comes to reviewing these projects. I know that we've had at least one in the time I've been here in areas that were of some environmental concern to the board. And, and having that would, again, give a little bit more credence to it. And for the decommissioning, I would have to look into the timeline being compressed. We do take charity bonds upfront as part of the approval process for decommissioning, and we do hold them for all of the fields that we have in town. So should they cease operation or should they disappear in the night? We do have bonds that we, again, we have to go through the, the legal process to claim them because they're essentially insurance policies as opposed to cash on hand. But there is an avenue to the, the town recouping costs from, rather than tracing the developer down and trying to squeeze blood from a stone.
Oh, that's great. That's really good to know. It wasn't clear in the bylaw, but that's really good to know. Thank you.
Do you have any input?
Um, yeah, I mean, I am a big fan of solar. Coming from Illinois where we had nine nuclear substations to subsidize our power and coming out here where my electric bill is three times the price. I'm a big fan of solar expansion. However, I do see the importance of looking into the bylaw and making sure we are protecting ecosystems and, you know, certain lands. I, I completely am supportive of that. So if that's something we look into in the future, I think that would be great.
Mr. Willsmer, anything?
Um, yeah. Most of it, I just, I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this in. It's definitely something worth thinking about in terms of how like we balance needs for like future green energy requirements and protecting what it is that we have here, especially in a rural place like Lunenburg. I really like some of the ideas. I like the, being able to, town being able to protect itself a bit from, you know, development being forced upon us. And I like the ideas in regards to utilizing disturbed land. So I just want to say thank you for bringing this into us.
Well, I, I thank you very much. It was, you know, I'm, I'm heartened by what I hear. And, yeah, I mean, I'm pro-solar also. I've got solar panels plastered all over my house. You know, even I have a solar-powered hot water heater. I have an electric car. You know, like, I'm, I'm not anti-solar at all. I just, I think that we can have both. We can, we can, if we have the political will, we can do both. And, and it's not that, I, thank you, Adam, for bringing up that they can't just come in and take our land. No, they can't. But sometimes there's, well, obviously, if the town doesn't want to sell, I, I don't, I don't know, Ken. The town doesn't have to sell, right?
No. And, and it's an action of town meeting with which to sell property. And from the Water District perspective, they have their own governing body, which is similar to town meeting, but different because it's only Water District customers or people located within the district. But they would also need to follow similar procedures to have a special meeting to dispose of property. And both of those properties host wells, so I don't think they'd be disposing of them readily. And there would be significant limitations on where panels could be constructed relative to the wellheads.
So, so why are they listed as solar overlays then? I guess I don't understand that.
I would have to defer to people who were involved in the development of that. I suspect that they were told there needs to be properties where solar is by right. And those are properties where it's very unlikely that they would be developed. And the former town dump would be the former town dump would be an, an ideal location for it. So why not make that more than, they listed more than one property, but two of them are essentially unbuildable for that purpose. I think it's sort of a shell game.
And, and yeah, to speak to that, as somebody who was here when we did it, it's just like every other state thing that mandates, they, they want the carrot for the developer. So you have, to give, to give, use the example of the MBTA communities, where required to zone for MBTA communities, what, 240 now?
Yeah.
240 units at a density of 15 units per acre, which is darn near twice what our current maximum zoning is, is eight units per acre. So state mandate, that was us complying.
The, the other thing, I guess, that I didn't mention is private land, and this is where I've seen it happen probably more than on public land, is, you know, like out at Chutesbury, there's a large landowner out there who owns hundreds, literally hundreds of acres of forested land, who is wanting to sell that land to a solar developer. And so the whole community is up in arms, but that landowner, it's like, I'm within my right to sell this land, and she is. But, you know, everybody's suing everybody else, and it's, it's really a mess. And it would, it would, if she sold her private land for solar, it, it would affect the stormwater, you know, they say they're going to fix it, but it, you saw what happened in, in that, in that photo, and they have videos on the website of one area that was developed already, and what happened to the farm downstream from it. It, it just wiped out a farm downstream from it. So, I mean, private lands are something else to consider. I don't know how that gets worked into the solar bylaw, or whether there's anything that you can do to control that.
So, so short of you having reviewed the solar bylaw, we do have two, two different qualifiers. We have small scale and large scale. Small scale is by right if you've got 20 or more acres. Large scale is special permit period unless you're within one of those three areas, I believe, did I miss?
Large scale is special permit, and you need a, yeah, unless you're in one of those three sites, and a minimum of 20 acres.
The small scale was a minimum of 20 acres?
No, the small scale is 10 KW by right anywhere.
Oh, that's right.
And large scale is minimum of 20 acres-
I did miss.
-special permit.
That's why I always ask him. So, yeah. So, yeah. So we're, we're about as restrictive as we could be, so if you wanted to open it up, that would be great, but we've gone 10 minutes when we only wanted to have five. That's fine, go ahead.
Okay. Well, no, I, I apologize for going on so long, but I, I really do appreciate your consideration. You know, if there's anything I could do to help with a review, you know, if you want me to research something, I'd be happy to do that. But I also would, would love to hear back from you guys, you know, after you discuss it a little bit more, and if that's possible.
Sure. Well, why don't we, certainly, if we do have it on the agenda, certainly, we can reach out to you.
Yeah, we can put it on the agenda.
I don't foresee it being on our agenda anytime in the near future. That doesn't mean it couldn't be. If you have some more compelling evidence, or some breakthroughs, or if you read our bylaw and determine that it's junk and it should be improved, then we'd love to hear-
I have not determined that. I don't have the expertise to determine that it's junk.
That's fine. No, that, that was just a little levity. So, I mean, it, I, I don't foresee it being on our agenda, but it certainly could be, and we welcome you back to have further discussions.
Well, except for that, like Adam said, you could look at maybe adding a section on protecting sensitive ecosystem areas in the standards. Is that a thing that you could do?
I'm not entirely sure. The, the state has probably reduced its, its tenacity about making us do something because it's in this one.
I would say we can do a review of it, and maybe we'll look at it sometime late March, early April.
There you go.
Well, I would really appreciate that, even if that was the only modification, if that, if that clause could be added in there on the standards.
Now, I hope you're not talking about the old landfill, because I don't think the, the critical environment could be any more disturbed than having billions of tons of garbage-
No, I think she's saying that the landfill would be a good place, but having that for review of projects on private land would give the board an additional criteria to work with developers to steer them away from areas that would be problematic for environmental reasons.
Right, so I guess basically-
Exactly.
-see if we have a steering wheel yet. We didn't have much of a steering wheel before, is basically what I was getting at.
No, exactly. And yes, I would love to see solar on the landfill, that'd be awesome.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for brevity, why don't, if we have any discussion about that, why don't we pick up on the, the end of the board comments?
That's a good plan.
So we have, we have a 7:30 appointment with Weston and Sampson. I assume that you two, are, are you it?
Yes.
Okay, super. So then, I assume you're ready?
Yes.
All right. So it's not 7:30, it's 7:38-ish, I guess. And so we have appointments for master planning services at 7:38. We have Weston and Sampson, please come up.
Would you like us to sit or stand?
Uh, we have a podium here, we've got a tripod there, I think.
Their presentation is on the rear.
And, and we have your PowerPoint on the screen, I think both of the screens, right?
Yep.
So wherever you're most comfortable, if you'd like to take the microphone and travel.
The microphone does pull out, so if you, you're more comfortable standing and walking, but we do need you on the mic for our member at home on Zoom and for the recording.
Awesome.
So anytime you're ready, sure?
Thank you very much for inviting us here tonight to talk about master planning. You can go to the next slide. My name is Steve Roy, I'm with Weston and Sampson, I'm a senior technical leader. I've been working with communities over 40 years in stormwater management, climate resilience, drinking water protection, and all, all kinds of planning-related activities. I have with me tonight our proposed project manager, Ashley Sweet. We have a couple other people on the slide here that are our senior management team, that'll be part of the, the project if we're selected to, to assist you on that. We have a group at Weston and Sampson of about 35 people that are in what we call our Water Resources and Urban Planning Group, and that, that group is led by Blake Martin. Also over the box where it says Tim, he/him, is Ted Harvey. He's one of our senior planners as well, just came from a regional planning agency to work with us. We've got several AICP-certified planners. Another person who's supposed to be with us tonight, Jim Rarden, had a family emergency, couldn't make it. He heads up our planning group, but Ashley is well-versed in all the work that we do in our group and one of our senior leaders. Next slide, please.
So this is an overview of our proposed project team for this project. This is in the proposal we gave you, so if it's a little hard to see, but I just wanted to give you an overview and an idea of how, how we kind of designed this. And we broke the project up into, you know, important segments that we thought were relevant by, really by, mostly by chapter, and then by public participation and GIS and mapping. And we chose, you know, people that we have on our team that really specialize in these areas and provided those names there. You have their resumes that go along with that, but wanted to just give you a general overview of kind of the team structure that we're proposing for the project. Next slide.
So I'll take it back for this one, just a little bit about Weston and Sampson, you probably read about us, you may have heard about us. We've, we've been around for quite a while, since 1896. Weston and Sampson's been doing work in Massachusetts. We're, we now are close to 800 people. We, we've expanded more into the southeast, you see some mid-Atlantic states that have some yellow colors there. But we're real full-service, and that's the other point that we wanted to mention to you today, we're not just planners. We're engineers, we're scientists, we're planners, we're landscape architects, we're designers. We have all of that in-house to deal with master planning, because we like to produce very practical plans that have actions associated with them. And, and we've done a lot of that work in communities surrounding Lunenburg. It's kind of surprising we haven't done much work in Lunenburg before in the past, I'm not sure why. Next slide. Just a couple of other points about why Weston and Sampson can, can help you out with your master plan. Again, we've worked around here quite a bit. I've done a lot of work with Townsend, with Groton, on MVP planning and climate resilience work. Fitchburg is a big climate, client of ours for water and wastewater work and stormwater work. We're now working on the John Fitch Highway to turn that into a, a master-planned roadway coming into the community and to incorporate complete street elements. That design is underway now. We've been going through the planning and early design phases for several years. So we've, we've got lots of work, work around you, and I also wanted to mention our grant experience. We never leave our communities high and dry, we always find the money. And one of the questions when we get to the Q and A I have for you is, why haven't you gone after or won any MVP money? Because the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program has produced a lot of funds for communities around here. We've gotten a lot for Fitchburg. Just Weston and Sampson, some of the numbers on that slide. We, we've been able to pull in about 20% of the available funds statewide to our clients out of the MVP program, so just on that one program. And we help in all kinds of grant programs. Ashley?
Thanks. So to go back to that multidisciplinary approach that Steve was talking about, we really believe that that's something that we can offer that's a bit different than the traditional planning firm. When we approach a master plan project, we are writing along with the community, maybe the transportation chapter, but then that transportation chapter goes for technical to review to a transportation engineer within our group. We have a transportation planner that sits within our engineering group. When we're talking about your services and facilities chapter, we're reaching out to individuals within the company that design, build, and manage infrastructure. So we're looking to them for advice on water and wastewater and stormwater, and so we're bringing in technical expertise that makes sure that we're designing or drafting a practical plan for you, that's something that's implementable. We have, we also use that knowledge from these experts to help you understand, you know, once we get to the action planning portion of master planning, that we're, we're putting a, you know, a price tag on that for you, that there's a realistic price tag, there's an understanding within our group, you know, we reach out to them, they understand the planning framework that we're working within, and we use their expertise to bring that into the plans, so that we're giving you practical, practical, actionable plans that you guys can implement at the local level. So we really feel like that's a strength of ours that we can offer, is that we have that expertise in-house, and we have established relationships with these individuals, and they've done this work on master plans for us before, so we have that back-and-forth conversation with them from the kind of high-level planning conversation down to the practical implementation, you know, components, technical components. Specific to planning experience, we have about, unfortunately, it's under Tim's name, but we have about 40 years of municipal planning experience within our planning group. Myself included in that, I sat for about 18 years as a municipal planner. So we very much understand the, the experience and the, the needs of the, on the municipal side. I have, we have, we have drafted comprehensive plans from both sides of the table as a consultant and as a municipal planner. We have regional experience, as Steve mentioned, we have our proposed assistant project manager came from a regional planning agency, and so we have that perspective on our team. We have state agency perspective, we have a planner who has worked at a state agency, and so we kind of cover all facets of planning. We've sat on all sides of the planning table and really feel like we understand municipal needs. I would say a significant amount of the work that Weston and Sampson does is for municipalities. So we really think that we can bring that kind of unique perspective, having served a lot of municipal clients and actually having sat as municipal planners, we really understand the dynamic, we understand the needs of the municipality. And we've also done other types of plans besides just comprehensive and master plans. We've done small-area plans, as Steve said, we've done a tremendous amount of MVP work, both in writing plans and in applying for grant funding to implement those plans for municipalities around the state. We've done HMP work, corridor studies, village revitalization studies, and also have a lot of experience in drafting and interpreting zoning ordinances and bylaws. Having that 40 years of municipal experience has given us a perspective of understanding how to write them, how to interpret them, how to implement them at the local level. Next slide, please. So just a little bit more about our planning experience. On the right-hand side, you can see we've got some of our more recent planning and master and comprehensive plan projects. Some of these are still underway, we're still actively working on some of these. And the graphic on the left is kind of high-level, you know, we see the planning, the, the master planning process kind of as a cycle, beginning with your regulatory framework, learning about your existing conditions and analyzing that to create that kind of baseline of information that we build the master plan on. Public engagement being a key portion of, of planning, you know, it's hugely important to get local buy-in, to get the community to feel like they're, they're a part of the process is, is the only, really the only good way to get, to get a successful plan. You have to have buy-in from the public and participation from the public. A community vision that comes from that, that public engagement, that builds consensus throughout the community, and then developing those actionable strategies for you as a municipality so that you can turn that into implementation, which then kind of comes back around to your regulatory framework, because a lot of those implementation or those implementing those action items will bring you back around to policy-setting for your local, you know, regulatory framework. So that's the kind of the planning cycle that we see as the master plan process. Next slide. So this chart is hard to read on this slide, but it is also in your proposal, or in our proposal to you. And what we wanted to do with this is just give you an overview of kind of the topic areas that we work in. Some of these we will focus more specifically on and maybe do a project, like a corridor project that might just focus on economic development and housing, but we've also done master plan and comprehensive plans that really touch upon all of these topic areas. So we feel we have a very, you know, you know, balanced kind of knowledge of all of these topic areas that go into the master planning process. Next slide. So this slide is just an overview of our project approach. We really see five kind of components to the planning process here. And we've given you the task numbers for each of these where we kind of fit this into the overall proposal, and really the community vision, goals, and policies being one segment of the planning process. We understand the importance of vision-setting, the, we understand the importance of having a community visioning workshop where the community really becomes invested in the overall vision for the project, which eventually moves into those goals and policies that set the overall tone of the, of the master plan for the community. The second piece of that being the public, public participation and the community engagement portion, again, understanding how incredibly important that component is to successful master planning. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about some of- And I'm going to talk a little bit more about some approaches to community engagement in the next slides. And then, the existing conditions analysis, tasks three through nine, really, that's where we review your existing documents. We review your existing regulatory framework. We talk to your staff, and we understand, you know, where you are right now. That, again, sets the foundation, the kind of the baseline for building the plan on top of. And then, again, as part of tasks three through nine, the things that start to rise to the surface through that analysis and through those interviews are the issues and opportunities. We start to learn about where are the gaps, where are the opportunities? And the public engagement portion really plays into this identification of issues and opportunities where the public has the opportunity to say, you know, I hate the traffic in this location, there's a problem, that needs to get fixed. Or, there's a beautiful piece of property, you should, you know, that should be bought as open space. And so, we gather that information at these public workshops and through surveys and other means of public engagement where we can start to tease out, you know, what the issues are for the community, where the opportunities exist. And that piece of it really bridges the gap between existing conditions and the implementation plan. So, we move from identifying those issues and opportunities into turning those into goals, policies, and actions. You know, what is the overarching goal? What are the policies that are going to get the town there? And then, what are the specific action items that we can write for you that are actionable and move you towards that goal? And in the implementation plan, that typically manifests as like a table, we can help you, as Steve said, identify grant resources to actually implement those action items. We can provide timeframes, responsible parties, support parties, all laid out in a table that really gives the community the ability to kind of take those pieces one at a time and start to move them towards implementation. Next slide. So, a little bit more about community engagement. We really feel strongly that community engagement is a completely individual thing. We have taken, you know, certain styles of community engagement and learned that they do work in some places and they don't work in other places. And so, we would say at the outset of the project, it's really important that we sit down with, whether it's the planning board or you form a master plan committee, and we start to talk about what we think is going to work in Lunenburg. You know, is it going to be better that we do a video? Should we have a mapping tool on the website? Should we hold, you know, a public meeting in this location or that location? You guys know your community, you know how people are going to respond and engage. And so, we'd like to work with you at the outset to kind of determine what the best approaches are. But just to give you a quick overview, we've used short videos to translate to the public what the project is about, you know, how they can play a role in it. Quick, you know, two to three-minute videos keep people's attention and can translate a lot of information in a very concise way. And so, videos can work really well for that. We've used flyers and posters and postcards to advertise, whether it be driving people to a survey, getting people to go to a website, or whether there's a public event that we want people to pay attention because there's going to be a booth or there's going to be some kind of feature there around the master plan. We can create both digital and paper versions of flyers that can get put up around town. And so, we can use those types of media to get people engaged. We can have a dedicated project website that's linked directly from the town's website. There's a lot of features that we can put on these websites. We can link the survey from there. We can do a mapping feature. People can drop a pin in a specific location and say, you know, like, I hate this intersection or I love this park. And we can also provide opportunities for people to just generally write comments or send emails about certain things. So, the website is a great tool to give people an opportunity to engage outside of an in-person type of meeting. They can do it whenever they feel like it in the comfort of their home. And we can keep updating the website regularly with new information. We can provide drafts for them to review. We can post public events. So, it's a great tool and kind of covers everything. And then, surveys and interviews. We would do, we would work with your group to design a short survey. We find if you can keep it to like 10 minutes for people to answer, it'll hold their attention. Surveys are a great way to get people engaged. If you take a survey and you're driven to the website to take the survey, you're more likely to go back and keep revisiting that website and kind of stay engaged with the project. We find that surveys are a good tool for kind of high-level information, but they're an even better tool for public engagement. They really get people interested in a project, and they keep them coming back and looking for more information. And interviews with stakeholders, your town staff. We've devised some questionnaires. We would present those to like your public works director, your police, your fire, asking them specific questions, you know, getting information from them in an easy way. They can fill it out when they have time. They can send it back when they have time. And we've found that that's been a useful tool to engage. Next slide. Also, in-person activities. We can do, you know, we can do visioning workshops. We can do mapping exercises. We've laid maps out on the table, allowed people to draw on them, write comments on them, tell us what works, what doesn't work. It's a great way to engage people and get their feedback. So, there's a multitude of ways that we can bring the public in. But as I said, I think we believe that it's important to individualize it for every community and at the outset of the project would work with you to figure out what the best tools you think are to do that. Next slide. So, just a very quick overview of the timetable that we put together for you. You can see there that public participation is something that we believe transacts the entire process, whether this be through surveys, public meetings, social media posts, updates to the website. That's a continual component of the project because we do understand how important it is. And we've broken down the tasks by essentially by chapter and see those overlapping somewhat. There is, we always want to make sure that there's a common thread that follows through the entire document. There's a lot of overlap when we're talking about land use and economic development and housing. There's a tremendous amount of overlap there. And so, we don't ever want to work on these in a vacuum. We want to make sure that there's that common thread that connects everything together. And next slide. So, we're, you know, we are aware of some issues that are facing the town. We wanted to make this not all about us, but give you an opportunity to talk to us too about, you know, what issues you think are important to address in the master plan as well as welcome you to, you know, ask us any questions you have.
Okay, are we at that point?
I think so, yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I do have a question. We have our next appointment scheduled for eight.
I've told her we're about 10 minutes behind.
Okay, and that's super. My other question was actually an internal one. Do we need to keep them separate? Should there be somebody?
The next one is virtual, so I haven't let her in yet.
Okay, beautiful.
Got it all figured out.
All right, so, back to you. Now, it's time for you to take the focus off yourself. But are you aware that we've got a major 40B in the works?
We are.
Okay, so, that's going to have a huge impact on one way or another. And you agree with that, yeah?
It will have the measure of that.
One way or another.
We have wastewater for Fitchburg, so, we know that the issues associated with wastewater flow that would come from that, the, uh, proposal, and the fact that that's on the infrastructure in the community that actually treats your wastewater. So, yeah, we understand that quite a bit.
Okay, very good. Do you have any questions, or?
I don't, being that this is my first time seeing anything like this.
So, can I ask one more question?
Is that possible, or do you want to go through yours first?
You've already asked the question, why haven't we gotten MVP funding? None of the projects that we've had ready were within the scope of what the MVP funding came for. So, one of our top three priorities were secondary access to our public safety building, which is essentially a real property purchase, more than anything else. The property that would be in question is probably at a price that the town is not currently willing to negotiate for. The second priority was resilience of our electrical infrastructure specifically. We don't control our electrical infrastructure. And so, in order to add resiliency, the town did approve a cutting of about 70 trees on a scenic road for Unitil to do a reconductoring project. So, they've taken a single-phase power circuit. They've made it a three-phase power circuit, and they've made it redundant. So, previously, it was two parallel circuits. That is now one circular circuit. I happen to live on that circuit. And in the last ice storm, we didn't lose power. So, that was a first for the eight years we've lived here. I know that there were some other people who did lose power, but I think it was less comprehensive. They added a series of cutoff stops throughout. So, the town has been partnering as much as we can with Unitil in supporting their efforts in a way that's at least contextually sensitive to the areas that they're working, but also trying to permit them to do some of the work they're doing. And I think the third priority was.
Drainage, culverts.
Yeah, and, I mean, we just, we have a ton of them that are a problem. And throughout town, they don't necess, the issues don't rise to the MVP level of climate impacted, even though the increase in frequency and intensity of storms is impacting those culverts. The replacement of those culverts isn't caused or won't necessarily alleviate climate-related issues. So, we haven't hit a point where we've found a quality project. And we're on our third DPW director in the time that we've been in MVP community. So, that certainly has an impact on the culvert situation. I think we've got a gentleman who'll be here for a while now. So, maybe as he's settled in, we'll start to see a little bit more movement in that direction.
Excellent, good. I appreciate the response to that question. Yeah, we've done about 35 MVP action grants. And I'd say about 10 of them are communities just like yours that, you know, need the basic information about their drainage infrastructure to create the capital improvement plan so that you know what are the highest priorities, where do you need to go spend the money to resolve flooding, not only, you know, in the future, but today's flooding. And they're willing to fund those type of projects. Great, thank you.
And we're just trying to keep ahead of our MS4 requirements.
Yeah, and MS4 is, you know, another thing. I spend a lot of time doing MS4 work. I do all the MS4 work over at Devon's. There, it's a constantly evolving permit. And communities are now getting into the implementation phase of that. You're going to have to start doing retrofits as part of that permit. So, there's a lot happening in stormwater and not as much money out there to fund it as there are some of these climate resilience. But if you're smart, you can find a way, to use the right words, to get the funding that also works on stormwater management, MS4. Those are my questions.
So, Mr. Willsmer, I didn't get to ask you. Do you have any input or questions or comments?
Sorry, wrong button. No, I don't necessarily know that I have anything cogent to provide here. This is kind of the first time I'm seeing the kind of larger picture of what's going on here.
Very good, very good. Another planning board member who has not had the opportunity to wear his HR hat.
I should mention also that I've done work on Lake Shirley in the past, not with Weston and Sampson, but when I worked on another, with another firm. So, I'm familiar with, you know, you have a number of, you know, lakeshore, community residents, and it's very important to Lunenburg, both the Hickory Hills and the Lake Shirley environment. So, I lived in Pepperell for 14 years. I moved away five years ago to the coast. But, you know, four of my kids graduated from North Middlesex, so I know the area well and continue to work with many of your neighboring communities.
Well, the lakefront people have been recently motivated to become publicly active.
We've heard about that, too.
In a very unfortunate way, but... Would, I have a general question. Would something like avoiding what happened recently with the taxation issue or the assessment issue, would that be avoidable through master planning? I mean, I don't.
So, I mean, I think that that's something that certainly, because it's a very real issue here, that's something that you want to look at in your land use planning, your economic development planning, you know, kind of balancing and shifting that burden of that tax burden and looking for, you know, unique ways to kind of alleviate that situation. So, it's something that you want to think about. It's something that you want to bring into. That would certainly be, I would imagine, you know, at a public workshop, somebody's going to say that at some point, and that's going to become a prevalent issue. But there are a variety of ways to kind of address that and to look at opportunities to kind of shift that burden or set forth goals that, you know, that alleviate that issue. And then, the real, the real challenge becomes, you know, how do you find or how do you develop action items that actually achieve that goal? And, you know, how does the community actually get there?
Super. Are we going to run into the third person or the other remote?
Oh, yeah, I will.
Perfect. That actually works out better. I don't want to cut you guys short, and I don't want to cut anybody short, quite honestly. But you've had your half hour, now go. I don't, I'm not quite sure that's how this should work.
No, I mean, if they have any final statements, if the board has any final questions, I think that's completely a reasonable and appropriate thing to.
Okay. Still nothing?
Nothing.
Still nothing, Tim? Okay, so, what would you say sets Sampson and Weston and Sampson, I'm sorry? I worked on the Big Dig, and there was only one corporation, there was only one company that was able to get a contract on their own as one company. And it's somewhat similar. The other people that have come through are groups of people. So, what would you say is the difference between having everything done in-house versus having a collaboration? And I'm not sure that they're not all in-house, but as one group versus a hand-selected group of people to work together, so to speak?
So, I think, I mean, we have done projects or master planning projects individually as the only firm. We have also done teaming with other firms. So, I think there are benefits and drawbacks to both, you know, designs. But I would say, again, I think the one thing that really sets us apart is that we have all that expertise within Weston and Sampson. So, if we have a, you know, specific transportation issue, we go to our transportation engineer. If we're talking about water and wastewater issues, we go to the, you know, we go to our infrastructure group, and we bring that issue to them, and we talk through, you know, what the issue is, and we get their feedback and their technical expertise. And not that you can't do that when you team, but we have these guys all in-house. I just hit a button on Teams, I call them up, they answer, or I shoot them an email, and we work on that issue together in-house. We're all right there. And this is something that we have worked hard, I think, in our planning group to establish these working relationships within Weston and Sampson. As Steve said, I mean, we're a firm of 800, close to 800 now. But we have specific people that we work with on a continual basis. And so, we've taught them the planning framework, and they've taught us, you know, kind of the technical side of it. And so, we go back and forth between them, and we can bring you that knowledge all as one team, under the same kind of roof. one team, under the same kind of roof. The other thing I think we can offer that I'll venture, I guess, the others don't have is that municipal experience. So we very much know what it's like to sit in his shoes. I did it for eighteen years, we have another person who did it for twenty years. So we really feel like that puts us in a unique position to really understand the local level. We understand, you know, that politics sometimes get in the way of things and that you can't, you know, you don't always get to do what you want to do or you have to package certain things a certain way in order to get people to come, you know, to stand around them and come together. So I think that's something that we can offer you as well is that we've sat on all sides of that planning table. We really understand kind of all the facets of planning from municipal to private consulting. I don't know if you have anything to add?
Just to quickly add, someone's always the prime and someone's always the sub in those teaming relationships. And often there's a tension that develops in terms of, did that assignment get done correctly? Was it done to the fullest extent? And our Weston and Sampson alleviates all of that tension because we have it all done in-house. If I have to tell someone, because I'm a senior member of the firm, that they've got to do something, again, I don't get any backlash from that or pushback at all. It gets done correctly versus having to negotiate with us up.
And I'll just, you know, to tag on to what Steve said, as I said, we've done master planning with sub consultants and there, it does sometimes create situations where we've had to go back to subs and been like, well, this is not how we would have done it. We would prefer to do it this way. Or if a sub has a chapter that they're working on, it kind of comes back and doesn't quite look right or doesn't quite have everything that we would have wanted. And so we eliminate all of that. We're all working from the same book within Weston and Sampson. And that kind of back and forth of like, hey, you know, that doesn't look right or that doesn't have what it needs to have, doesn't happen.
Very good.
I only work here.
Okay. Keep us straight and narrow. Super. So you are Ted and you are Ashley.
I'm Steve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so I thought that you had said you were Ted. So Ashley is actually one of the three people that were intended to be on the front people?
Yes, Ashley would be our project manager, senior project manager for this.
Okay. Super. And who is the person who couldn't make it?
Jim Raridan runs our planning division.
Okay. Very good. Short of anybody else, Mr. Welsmer, do you have anything additional?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Very good.
None for me.
Okay. I don't know how to close this.
You thank them for their time and tell them we'll be in touch.
Thank you very much for your time and we will be in touch.
And you have a time frame?
As soon as we can. I don't want to say, I don't want to give you a time and have the board decide they want to take an extra meeting to think about it. But, I mean, we're about thirty days into the ninety-day time limit, but we would hope to do it as soon as possible because we'd like to get this started so that we can be ready for town meeting by 2025. And that is really getting us started soon because that two years goes real quick when you really start digging into it.
So can we just say about, probably within two weeks?
I would say within the next thirty days, we should have a decision because if they choose to go to another meeting, that would be two weeks and I'd hate to tell you two weeks and call you in three.
We understand our words.
Under-promise and over-deliver.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have also been wondering why, doesn't Weston and Sampson work with us? Is public comment appropriate?
It's up to you generally.
Yeah, yeah, what would you like to say? Of course. I think you need the microphone. You need the microphone. You need the microphone, Dave. You know the drill, you need the microphone. And then name and address for the five people in town that don't know you.
MCI Concord. My name is Dave Rogers, I live at eighty-two Highland Street. Been in town for fifty years. Just some observations. The problems that I see are solutions that I don't see. Specifically, we have a big water problem in town, PFAS. We have a big problem in town because of the state intervention in telling us what to do. The-
Funded mandates?
Sorry?
MBTA communities.
Thank you, MBTA. We have a very big problem with the forty-B. So all of these things we have no control over, but yet we have to, and the funding is not to be seen. So to compound that from my perspective, the town, it's a great town, but there are as many points of views as there are groups and probably six or seven in the town. So it's very difficult to get consensus and that sort of thing. So one of the things that I would suggest that might be pertinent to this whole process is to find out what kind of money is available to help us study the things and earmark that because it's just amazing, the breadth of this. So we can, you know, but it's a big project and the first thing is to get consensus from folks as to what it is at the end of the day will be the results. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lick, would you like to plug?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It's up to you, I guess.
I need them to move along, though. I said I need them all to move along, though.
Well, you can't curse not having public information.
It's a double-edged sword.
It is. I believe they work with the sewer commission.
Hello, Laura.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, perfect.
I'm going to turn this over to you and I have your presentation, so just tell me when you want to advance the slides.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for inviting us to, well, me representing the team really to interview today. So we can go ahead to the next slide. So I'm here today, I'm Laura Smead, I'm the Senior Community Planner. I'm Jan Goldson and if we were chosen to work with you on this project, I will be the project manager for the project. And not able to be with me tonight is the rest of my team. So there's Jen Goldson, who's the founder and director of the firm, and Alana Zivar, who is our community engagement specialist, and also Bob Mitchell, who's well-known in Massachusetts for his zoning work and has his own consulting firm. Jan Goldson is proposing to be the primary lead firm on the project, doing all the project coordination and the visioning, the public participation and all the various chapters and implementation. But at the same time, Bob has some important expertise in planning and zoning consulting and has done all kinds of zoning diagnoses and proposed changes and whole rewrites. So he's a very valuable asset to have on our team. Okay, next slide. So here we are, here's a few pictures of folks who can't be here tonight. Jan Goldson was established over fifteen years ago and we primarily serve Massachusetts. And in 2020, we were pleased to have been awarded the Comprehensive Planning Award for that year for the Winchester Master Plan. So we do consider ourselves to have some expertise in local comprehensive planning. We really pride ourselves on the community engagement work that we do and we do a lot of other sort of planning work, too, around housing and zoning, community preservation, historic preservation, and of course, GIS. All right, next slide. And here's Bob. He's been at this for a long time. He has literally written the book on Massachusetts land use. So he is extend, he's just a wealth of knowledge and a delightful person to work with on anything related to zoning and he has a very good sense of humor as well. All right, next slide. So here's a few highlighted projects for you, some recent master plans that we either have already completed or are working on in various phases at the moment. So along the top there are master plans that the firm has completed and along the bottom are master plans that are in various stages of completion at the moment. So there's a lot going on there. Winchester is the one that won the award in 2020. Next slide. And we would really be thrilled to work with you as well. We recognize you, you're a lovely, small, historic town, you've got this rural charm, you've got some wonderful assets that I'm sure you would like to preserve, but at the same time, some complex planning issues at play now, a fair amount of, you know, a fair amount of growth in recent years as well as trying to plan for continued growth in the future. You have thoughtful leadership and I really want to commend you for taking this step, regardless of whoever you decide to work with at updating your master plan because it will really help set policy, direction, and a framework for the future. All right, next slide. So at its heart, we think about master plans as a set of core questions. And one of them is really, who are you as a community? What makes Lunenburg unique and what are your strengths? How do you capitalize on those strengths strategically? How do you leverage those to help you achieve your goals? And how do you balance these competing interests? Because there still are always tensions between different goals and that's one of the beautiful things I think about doing a master plan is because you can look at all those various aspects at the same time and see how they come into play with each other. Next slide. So this is an opportunity for you to really learn what has changed in the last couple of decades and what are some issues now and opportunities now. So this is just a few quick snapshots of some quick data. But, you know, you've had some very steady growth, especially recently, and some of your housing stock is a little bit on the, you know, on the older side, but in recent years, you've had a fair amount more of different kinds of units being developed, so a much more multifamily in recent years. Just, you know, some of the things that we would be looking at. To the next slide. And like I said, this is a real opportunity to bring people together as well, to have some successful and meaningful community engagement. We like to use a wide variety of different ways to engage people, in-person, as well as we have a suite of online tools and things like, a variety of ways to really meet people where they are and make it easy for them to engage. Some people are going to want to have a lengthy discussion and sit down and really talk through things for a couple of hours in a community workshop or in a meeting in a box sort of format. And some people are like, I have about five minutes, I'm interested, but, you know, they just want to hop online and take a quick survey or do like a crowd map or something like that. So we try to offer all of those tools and we do engagement through every single phase of the process. All right, next slide. And this is also an opportunity to create a roadmap for yourself for the future, to help guide your local decision-making into the next ten, fifteen years. And, you know, I know you're looking to refresh your zoning, there's perhaps new, some new state requirements that are on your mind. Where do you allocate municipal resources? How do you guide local decision-making? So a master plan, at the end of it, will be able to give you the framework and some guiding principles to be making some decisions and some really practical and actionable strategies to help move you forward on your goals. All right, next slide. So what do you get if you work with Jan Goldson? We have some deep expertise in community engagement. We really believe in collaborative work with you and with the community. We pride ourselves on having deliverables on time and in budget. And we have some sophisticated data that we really work with as one source of, you know, evidence-based learning, if you will, but also really rely on the participatory process to have the others, equally as important in my mind, data, which is the community. And in the end, we want to have this really creative and practical, sort of both visionary and actionable, plan that you can really take ownership of and feel proud of at the end of the day. All right, next slide. So for the project understanding scope, so these are broken into four phases, is how we think about it. In the first phase, we're trying to get to know you as a community and where you've been and where you are today. So we have monthly meetings with the master plan committee. Usually there's a master plan committee that is sort of gathered for a project like this. And at the same time, myself would have up to four, so, you know, monthly check-in meetings a week before. Usually we meet with the master plan committee to discuss topics and things coming up. And we'll be, you know, creating the schedule and, but the deliverable really for this phase is the existing conditions report. So we're going to be looking in each of these categories and taking inventory and doing focus groups and doing interviews and gathering all of the previous plans and efforts and things that you have already done and summarizing it together and hopefully a very concise but high-quality document, that's, you know, accurate of course, and can set us up for the next phase. So you can see here that to gain some of that understanding, we do focus groups across all the different topics with the exception of public services and facilities where I like to do interviews with different department heads or perhaps it's, you know, border committee staff member, but interviews to help understand the public services and facilities element better. Okay, so that's phase one. So phase two, next slide, is all about the visioning for tomorrow. So in this phase, we get to dream big before we get practical a little bit. So we want, you know, we're holding our monthly meetings and at the same time, we're going to hold a public forum. It's a kickoff meeting to help the whole community kind of get more engaged with the process. And that's when we unveil this sort of suite of broader public engagement tools such as the Meeting in a Box, which is a document that can be printed off and available at various places around town or downloaded from someone's own computer at home, and an online community survey that we also can offer in paper format, and our Pride Map, which is an online interactive map where people drop pins on various places on the map and we can code it different ways and start to look at data in a more spatial format, as well as, you know, other outreach materials that could be used at tabling and events and so on. And we summarize all of that for you into an engagement summary and look for themes that we then work with the committee to start, you know, we give them everything they need, but we really want them to have the authorship of the vision and goals and we have kind of a working session with them. But it's all based on all of this outreach that has happened in the first couple of phases to try to- phases to try to wordsmith what that vision and goals are. And we revise and refine that. So, and at the same time in phase two, we're, where necessary, revising the existing conditions report, because we do like to vet that first through the committee and the planning board, but then also through, you know, the broader public and other boards and committees and staff in town. So sometimes there's some things that need to get tweaked or updated or whatnot, so we're revising the existing conditions report in phase two, too. All right, and then that leads us and sets us up for phase three, which is the next slide. Continuing those monthly meetings. And here we start to deep dive into strategies. So how are we going to actually accomplish these goals? And we start with a rough outline there, but we'd like to vet, because the strategies get a lot more technical, we try to vet those through technical working sessions, we call them, that might be with board and committee members or staff or knowledgeable members of the public, until we kind of refine those strategies into things that we think are practicable and actionable. And we, you know, revising up to two rounds of those strategies as well. And coming up with kind of a shortlist of the ones that we know we want to move forward with into the final, into the plan. So in phase four is when we bring it all together into the full-on something you would call like a master plan. And that's where we get, we put it into a more beautiful publication-type format. We also make, we edit it and make it more readable to the regular, you know, community. We have lots and lots of maybe more infographic things in there or photographs in there. So you have these sort of volumes of data that might be like 100 pages in these other, you know, the existing conditions report, for example, might be 100 pages. But the planning, the report, the master plan itself may bring in some of that from the existing conditions report, but that's going to be more of the articulating about strategies. And we will also, in the, in, once we get those finalized, we also create an action plan. So that's going to be more of the working sort of Excel sheet of who, who's responsible, who's the main responsible party here, who's some supporting parties generally, how much is this strategy going to cost? If there's a cost to it, what kind of timeframe are we talking about, you know, sort of short, medium, and long term? And that's something you can work with and rearrange as sort of new opportunities arise or, or things get up in priority or down in priority. So that's kind of a working document that stays with you and your staff. And, you know, phase four is, it's four months, but it's, it's a lot of vetting, 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 wait to the end, until it's finally adopted by the planning board. And with that, I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, very good. Elena, welcome, by the way.
Laura.
I'm sorry?
Laura.
It is Laura. I'm sorry, Laura. Again, welcome, Laura. And planning, planning board, wearing my HR hat, I'm not good at this. So thank you for being here. You were expecting to be presenting by yourself?
Yes.
Or no? You were, okay. So do you have any questions or?
Um, let me think. Give me a minute.
I have a question. How, how many projects have you worked on together with your partners here?
I have worked on, so about four of the eight.
Okay.
On the previous slide. Or, yeah, one of those previous slides where we showed them.
I think what he's asking is partnering with, with Bob Mitchell.
Oh, with Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
You know, we haven't had, um, to my knowledge, I think that Jen Goldson has been really looking for an opportunity to work with Bob on a project. She has known him for years as, as have I, but she, you know, but he, we haven't had an opportunity to really partner on a project yet. So this would be the first one that we're, we're partnering with Bob on. But, you know, we've, we've known each other for a long time.
Very good. One more time?
No, um, can you speak, I apologize if I, if I missed it, but can you speak on any opportunities you see in Lunenburg or your group has seen in Lunenburg?
Um, so I see Lunenburg as a community that, you know, you have, you've experienced a fair bit of growth. And you're close enough to Boston, but far enough away from Boston that you're sort of, you still have some vacant land that is developable. And at the same time, because you are, you're not, you know, you're not a tiny community, but you're not the largest community either. And so I'm, you know, it's thinking of, I'm sure there's constraints, right? There's environmental constraints and, and, you know, water and septic and things like that. So it's probably, it's thinking through that, it's thinking through other opportunities in the economic development area, creative ideas. You're very close to Fitchburg, which probably takes a lot of that, but what, you know, maybe there's some strengths around ecotourism or farms or something there where there can be some creative thinking around economic development. And, and also, you know, making the most of your natural resources and how to kind of protect and preserve those and historic resources. So, yeah, it's, you know, it would be a process to get to know the community, of course, but that's just things that pop in my mind off the top.
Thank you so much.
Anything else?
Nope.
Mr. Welsmer, do you have anything to ask or mention?
Uh, no, no additional questions.
So Laura, are you, are you aware that we have potentially a large 40B coming?
I wasn't aware of that, but that doesn't necessarily surprise me. Looking at, you know, the amount of multifamily that looks like it's, it's occurred in recent years makes me think that those are probably 40Bs. So, and the fact that you have land left to develop probably means that you're going to be seeing those. Yes, but no, I didn't know. By, by large, do you mean in terms of number of units or size of the development?
Yes.
Both?
Um, yeah, I'm being flip, I'm sorry. So, um, yeah, this, this has the potential to increase our population by what, 10%ish?
Uh, two, four.
Yeah, so it, it's.
Not 10%, but.
It's darn near close.
Yeah, it's, it's a good bit.
And, and it's, it's way out in the boonies, they need to, I don't need to get into details. So, I mean, what would, I can't imagine that it wouldn't, but what kind of differences in your master plan products would, having recently increased eight to 10% population versus?
Yeah, so, I mean, you start to have to think about, because you can't really prevent these from happening until you're over 10%, I think you have to, in the short term, plan for, plan for that potential growth. Maybe look for examples of other, other 40Bs in town, trying to get an understanding of what, what impacts that's had on municipal services or the schools in terms of potential numbers of people or students. And then, yeah, you would be doing an analysis, I think, of what the fiscal impacts might be. And they aren't necessarily all negative, because the people coming in would be paying taxes as well. But I could see that that's, that's a lot of people, potentially all at the same time. So it's going to have to take some, some thought. And I think it should be, you know, captured in the master plan in terms of what are, and I'm sure in the permitting process, you're going to be looking through things like a traffic analysis and that kind of thing as a part of the, but the permitting, of course, for 40Bs is different, too. Like it's, it, it doesn't have the same level of scrutiny or control as, as a normal development of that size. So I get that. But it certainly should be taken accounted for, taken accounted for in the master plan, like when you're thinking about population projections and potential enrollment in the schools' projections.
No doubt. What else? So Tim, Tim, nothing? You're nothing?
I'm good, yep.
What else did I ask? Partnering for 40B. Unfunded mandates, can you speak to us about anything that we could do to avoid, or maybe you don't think that they, maybe you don't perceive them as unfunded mandates? The state forces us to do certain things. How would you, how would you recommend us to deal with something that we didn't want to necessarily have to deal with?
Um, well, it's, some of it's figuring out how to pay for it. So that could be, there's, you know, a variety of different, perhaps grant programs that could help you out, or maybe there's other, like I said, creative economic development ideas that could help boost or diversify some of the tax revenues from the town. And, you know, some of it is advocacy, using with your, you know, representatives and things at the state legislature, getting, you know, maybe there's earmarks in your favor, or maybe there's ways to try to strategize better at the, at the state level for some of these things. But I know it's a challenge, but the good news is that there are many communities in the same boat.
True.
So you don't have to reinvent the wheel necessarily, and we can help provide some of that, resources and ideas, kind of collaboratively with you.
Great. Well, Adam, what do you have?
I don't have anything.
You, okay. Well, I very much appreciate your patience with us being late, and, and I appreciate you coming and presenting to us. I think that, what do we say, 30, 30 days at the outset to hear from us?
I think with that, we're saying that we should have a, be ready to issue an award within 30 days.
Right, right. Do you have any questions for us?
Um, I'm thinking of when you were thinking of, so it sounds like a word within 30 days. When were you thinking of kicking off the project? And do you have a master plan committee already formed?
We do not have a master plan committee already formed. I think we have, I think our most recent module was 14, 2014?
No, well, yeah, it's sort of.
Actually, that wasn't technically, we didn't even approve it, so.
I think what, what would probably happen is whoever is, is the selected firm kickoff can, can be negotiated as to when that would happen. Ideally, we're looking at a wrap-up for town meeting in May of 2025. So that would be a 24-month, I think, most people have said 18 months is about the timeframe that they'd want to execute this in. So all of that sort of balances really well for us. You know, if it's a, if it's a May kickoff, if it's a June kickoff, I think that's probably fine. I think September might be a bit far out.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, I'm guessing we probably want to start in June, is my sense, in which we give you some time to think about how, who would be, you know, the project, I'm assuming that the planning director would be the, maybe the main project lead.
That would probably be correct.
Point of contact, but the, like a master plan committee.
Yeah, and we've gone back and forth. The board has had differing opinions as to whether or not they want a master plan committee or whether they want the planning board to be that committee. And I think that once we select and affirm, the, the board would have to come down and make a solid decision on that. And that may be informed by whichever firm and their sort of input and thoughts.
Okay.
Concur. I would concur with that. Super.
I don't have anything else.
Okay, I guess, I guess we're done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Have a great day.
Hey. Just for the folks at home, we are coordinating with our third interviewee.
I'm just going to go check out there and see if he's here.
Oh, they were coming in person?
One of them.
Oh, didn't realize that.
We do have one member of the team on there.
There is somebody on there. They are currently muted, which.
Good evening.
I can hear you. Hello, welcome.
Excellent. Thank you, I can hear you as well.
So our director just went downstairs to look to see if one of your crew is here
I will wait for him to arrive. I, I've been texting with him, so I believe he's down there.
Excellent, and, and I apologize for the delay. We're 20 minutes, we're 20 minutes late.
Oh my gosh.
I will just warn you, I may have to change positions, but if I do, I will log out and log right back in again.
Okay.
Change what?
She might have to change position.
Oh, okay.
Hello.
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 Where would you like us?
Wherever you'd like, but you need to have the microphone for our audience at home. We have one remote member as well. But I don't, I wa, I definitely want to wait for, for Adam to come back before we begin, but, sure, make yourself.
Want me here?
Yeah, you can unhook it and walk around if you'd like.
So it comes out of the stand and, kind of like, what was that? Most of these TV shows.
Price is Right?
I don't even watch TV, so why am I saying this silly stuff?
I think of The Price is Right.
Are you going to use the PDF that we sent you?
I believe so.
Yes.
Yes.
It should be on the screen back there.
Okay, I think we are together. Are you ready?
Yep.
Okay.
You just tell me and I'll advance them.
No, thanks. We also have Emily. Hi, Emily, are you there?
Hi, I'm here.
So, hello.
Hello.
I'm, I'm Rami El-Samahi. I'm here with Chris Herlick, and Emily Innis is on, is with us virtually. Thank you very much for inviting us to talk to you today. We'll, we know we're the last ones, so we'll try to be as riveting as possible to keep you awake. I can't promise fireworks, but I'll, I'll do my best.
Yeah, no, no need to red island happening again.
So, next please. I thought we would just briefly introduce ourselves, briefly go through our experience, and then spend a little bit of time on our approach, and then open it up to what I'm sure you are interested in as this discussion. Next, please. So this is the team. You, you see Emily, my partner, Mark Paznik, myself, Eric Halverson, Chris Herlick from RKG, and two of our associates from Over Under. This will be the core of the team where we work with you. You'll see of the six people, there are four principals. So that means, you know, there are senior people working with you throughout the process, and you will see us.
are senior people working with you throughout the process, and you will see us always. We're three small firms, and we're very, we want it that way. We want to be involved in the work we produce, so. Next, please. Tonight, you have the pleasure of myself and Chris and Emily. Unfortunately, the others can't be with us tonight, but they will be later. Next, please. So, this is a combination of three teams, three firms, as you know, from, from the RFP. Over Under, next, please, is a multidisciplinary firm with expertise in planning, architecture, and graphic design. Next, please. We do master plans, design standards. Next, please. We also do a fair amount of graphics and wayfinding, everything from book design to signs. Next, please. We do the sort of things that, you know, urban planners and architects do, special permit review, feasibility studies, and sort of visioning for new public buildings and public spaces. Next, please. RKG Associates, we've had the pleasure of working with in, in the past. They have deep experience in economic planning and real estate consultancy. Next, please. They do everything from comprehensive master planning to economic development plans, like the one they did for North Central Massachusetts, as well as sort of town center plans. We worked with them in Taunton several years ago, and more recently, we worked side by side in Ashburnham, just down the road. Next, please. And then finally, Emily Innes from Innes Associates has, is an award-winning planner with, you know, twelve, twelve-plus years of experience guiding the use of land and the impact of regulation on communities. Next, please. You have here, in this slide, two projects that she's worked on, the Situate 2040 Comprehensive Master Plan Update, and the other one, I believe, is in Lawrence. And she will be helping us with the zoning analysis and any recommendations for changes that would come as a result of that. Next, please. The experience you can glean from, from the document we presented you a few weeks ago, I think maybe what might set us apart, I hope, is our approach. It's a little different, perhaps, because of this combination of, of different skills. And that approach will sort of lead us to take on the project in this, in, in a particular way. We always start, next, please, with what we call the discovery period. Next, please. And that includes all sorts of things, everything from, next, please, going through archives. We, I'm a history nerd at heart, and there's nothing I would enjoy more than spending the day in, in the archive room of any library or historical society, but it's also very important when you're understanding, the planning, to sort of try to understand where it came from before. In addition to the archives, we're also using sort of GIS technology, which will give you a sense of demographics, topography, the relationship, the juxtaposition of different data sets, and the sorts of things that might emerge through that juxtaposition that you might not see on, on the surface. We also do good old-fashioned photo documentation and sketching. Next, please. Like, this is a sort of compilation of the entire Main Street of downtown Taunton. Next, please. We don't just draw and try to discover places, physical things, but also processes. This is a diagram that we drew in an effort to try to understand for ourselves how the special permit procedure works in the city of Cambridge. It's, it exists in language, but we're visual people and, and trying to sort of make a, we had to make this flow chart to sort of really understand where the possible roadblocks might be. And in fact, it was useful to us, but then also became very helpful to the city, because they now use this to explain it to other confused people. Next, please. Interviews with stakeholders is a key way of discovering every, things about, about the place that we work in. Both Over Under and RKG, we've done this together. We've actually learned a lot from RKG over the years and how they, how they conduct these interviews, and it's, it's really helped us get to know the places we study on a kind of, in a less quantitative way, but in a sort of qualitative manner, which is also very helpful. Next, please. And then we sort of take all of this information, all this data, and try to analyze it through drawings that sort of then kind of re-present what we have digested back to the community. Next, please. I think perhaps the biggest and most important avenue of, of discovery is through engagement. We're, we're very keen on, on, on public engagement. We don't just see it as a box to, to tick off. I, 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 over the years, I, I taught for ten years at Carnegie Mellon, and taught the urban design studios there, where we'd work with different communities, and it was really sort of, that for me was a discovery, and sort of understanding how the interaction with a community can be more, should be more than perfunctory, should be more than a sort of checklist, but can be a real way to drive the design of, of what is done. Part of the reason I sort of reacted so negatively to community engagement beforehand was because it, it's done often in a very perfunctory way. And we've tried as a, as a, as a, as a group to resist that. Part of, part of good community engagement is just showing up. Next, please. It's showing up to the places where people are, and trying to get them to the places where you want them to be, which are the public meetings and whatnot. Next, please. Public meetings are an essential part of any planning effort, any design effort at all, I would argue. Next, please. But they need to be fun. They, they need to be something that people enjoy going to, and equally important, they need to be fun, because being fun helps sort of break down some of the, let's call it, nervousness that you might have at the beginning of things, or reluctance to engage in, in a subject in, in, in a kind of honest way. And, and we take, we take this kind of engagement process as a design opportunity. So, in, in this case, you know, we, we create these games, like, these were games that we created. One, we sort of, this was for a public library project in Haverhill. We created Haverhill bucks, and, and everyone got some, and as they were, in the game, you sort of had to spend them in particular ways, and it, it made people kind of realize there's a limited amount of money, and I, I have to make choices, but it was also sort of a fun, kind of monopoly-like thing. Another game we played that same evening was sort of Design the Library Yourself. So, here's, here's a kit of parts, you know, which things are most important to you. So, we got, got people to think about it spatially, but also kind of economically in, in the course of an evening. Next, please. Part of the issue with public meetings is not everyone can come to a public meeting. You might have a job, you might have kids, you might be, you know, have to take care of, of, of other people in your family. So, you have to, to do a real community engagement, true community engagement, you have to devise other means of, of getting people's input. And so, you know, there's all sorts of digital access, and one of the things we've learned from the pandemic is to make better use of, of those things. So, in, in this case, you're seeing three web apps that we designed, one for Franklin Park, one for town, Chicopee, Chicopee in Western Mass, and one for Cambridge. Ways to sort of get people engaged, get them on to, in, in the previous slide, you saw a QR code, so you can scan that, and it'll take you to one of these, and, and then from that, you can either input information or, or just receive information. And that's, you know, asynchronous. It doesn't have to be at the meeting, that's only once every few months, et cetera. Next, please. A different way of, of communicating is through social media, so in Chicopee, we also were involved in the making of the, an Instagram post that was sort of kept, and, and reading through the comments sort of gave you some sort of qualitative information as well. Next, please. In Taunton, we did a much more thorough, online, sort of curated website that allowed people to post what they liked and what they didn't like, have conversations about it, so that public meeting sort of carried on and became this sort of much longer and much more interesting, or sort of deeper dialogue with, with the community. If you're interested in that, we can talk about that, because there are ways to do it right, and, and ways for it to become a total mess, but, but it's, it's a useful tool. So, with all of that engagement, next, please, we then, we iterate. So, by iterating, in this case, I mean we do something and we do it again, and we play it back to the community and, and do it again. For example, we use our skills to create three-dimensional representations, in this case, this plan for the village of Sunderland in Western Mass. Next, please. We also use Photoshop to do very quick, sort of before and afters, if you could go to the next one, please, to show very quickly what, how a space could be, you know, changed. And, and these, you know, take a couple of hours, so we can, we can do this in the course of a meeting and have discussions with, with people about what we've drawn through, for example. Next, please. We also use parametric modeling, which is, takes a little more than an hour to, to set up, but once you've got the parameters that you want, you actually can, what you're seeing here is sort of a screen cap of a program called Grasshopper that allows you to script, you know, the inputs you want. In this case, it's about street widths and the kinds of streets that, that the community might want, and then that kind of gives you a huge number of, of possibilities on, on the other side. Next, please. Parametric modeling was, been very useful for us when we looked, in this case, we were looking at typical blocks in, in a project in Malaysia, but these sort of typical block sizes, and trying to investigate the, where to put the parking, whether it was underground or above ground, and then that would have, you know, a, 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 an impact on how high the, the buildings could be. Next, please. We use that same method in the town of Salisbury to look at the, the relationship between parking and open space, which no matter how big or how small a community is, parking and open space is always going to be an issue. So, in this case, we looked at the zoning code very carefully, trying to understand how many parking spaces you had to have based on, on the code. Next, please. And we're, was that, we're then able to kind of toggle between the usable open space versus the parking space that was required, and in some of these, you can see virtually no open spaces available, because there's so much parking. So, without changing the parking, you're not going to get open space in that kind of parcel, in that kind of zone. Next, please. It also allowed us to kind of quickly illustrate what you might have with all surface parking in a new development they were thinking about, versus half-surface, half-structure, versus all-structure, you know, and then you see this kind of open space go. So, so these are very quick, they're not intended to be final things, but they're a way to sort of talk back and forth with, with the community and stakeholders about what something might actually look like, in, in a kind of interim way. And then finally, the most important part of, or the, or the final part of the approach is, is how we communicate, communicate these ideas and desires of the community. Next, please. It could be in the form of a book. Oftentimes, a, 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 a master plan is, the ultimate goal is to have a book, as it was in the case of Imagine 2030, which is Boston's first comprehensive plan for fifty years. We were asked to come in to, to do the graphic design at, at the end of the project, in the last four months of the project, and design a, a book that we're, we're very proud of. But a book might not be always the, the right medium. Next, please. It could be a slide deck that the, you know, the planning staff then use to go talk to other groups in the community, or can arrange for different audiences as they need. Next, please. It could be a website that the public has access to and can, can, can look at, at any time they, they want. Next, please. Increasingly, and it might not be right for this project, but increasingly, I'm coming to believe that the phone is actually the, the right medium for so much of what we do. And we are designing, this, for example, was a set of storefront guidelines for a store owner, small business owners in, in the city of Chicopee, that we designed, you know, these guys are busy, they don't have time to sit in front of a laptop or a desktop, let's make it available to them as quickly as possible. So, these are just sort of snapshots of, of something that was designed specifically for their phone, not just in, in the size, but also in the tone and, and, and the, the voice, the. Next, please. Regardless of the medium, the communication has to kind of play back to the community what we have heard, right? And as you sort of move back and forth, it's, it's about coming to some sort of consensus, and, and listening, listening to, to one another, listening to the experts on the town, who are actually the people who live in the town, not, not us. We bring a different kind of expertise and, and perspective, perhaps, but we're not the experts on, on your town, you, you are. So, it's that back and forth between what, what, what you know and what we know that, that should, should, should resonate in the final output. Next, please. And ultimately, what that final output is, regardless of the medium, it ought to clearly, succinctly articulate what the tasks are going forward. The order of those tasks, if there is a necessary order, the relationship of one thing to, to the next, and what is sort of what you might call low-hanging fruit, versus the sort of longer-term objectives. And with that, I will give you back to the floor, and, and we're here to answer any questions you, you might have for us.
Not sure why you came. Would you, would you like?
You'll, you'll see now.
Oh, you're the answer guy. Oh.
Emily.
Emily is worse.
Okay.
We decided, given it was half an hour, we should present as succinctly as possible and then open it up to discussion.
Sure, sure. Do you have anything?
Not yet.
No? Mr. Welsmer?
Uh, no, I don't have anything to add at this time.
Okay, very good. I didn't explain to you folks. We have a third member, he's participating remotely. All right, so. All right, so are you aware that we have a considerable 40B in application process right now?
Yes.
Yes. What would that, what kind of things would, a yay or an a, if that's approved, or if it's not, it's going to go to litigation. If it's not approved, so I can't imagine not actually becoming something. So what kind of differences would that make in your approach?
Emily, did you hear the question?
I did hear the question. So my first question would be back to you all, would be, how has the community conversation been going with the 40B? You know, there are some communities that are, as many communities are worried about change, and there are some communities where there is a strong divide between some people who welcome a change and some people who don't. And there are some communities where they, the friendly, the 40B is more of a friendly 40B. Now, you mentioned litigation, so I'm assuming that it is not a friendly 40B. So my question for you is more, how has that, how has the community been involved in the conversations? And what impact has that been on your launch or communication around housing?
It's been pretty negative, the response to date. The town has a very specific and sordid history with the person proposing the 40B, so I think that's colored a lot of the conversation. I think the town in general has some trauma related to housing, specifically multifamily housing, and specifically over the last decade or so. Between 2011, excuse me, and about 2017, 18, housing has exploded in town. The population has grown exponentially to the point where we had to go and solicit a town funded population projection through 2040 because the projections that came in conjunction with the 2010 census had us losing population into 2020 and beyond. And we're probably, it's probably about a 5,000 person swing between the projections and the reality. So that in and of itself has caused a lot of divide in the community in some ways. Lunenburg, and I'm as far from a long term resident as one really can be, so I come at this from, I started working here a little less than 10 years ago, I moved here about eight years ago, but the established community was really a small farm community up until the turn of the century, and has slowly been transitioning into a bedroom community and a suburban community that has done a really good job of retaining its rural farm base. But the population, the housing stock, the approach is, it's really in a transition period, and there's a lot of push and pull, that I don't think has ever really been adequately addressed, either internally, externally, or policy wise.
So that transition period that Lunenburg is in, I think that's something that attracted all three of us. So while Overunder and RKG have worked together on a lot of projects, RKG and I have worked together on a lot of projects. And among the projects that I've been doing a lot of recently are the rural communities that are in that period of transitioning from being primarily agricultural to something else. And your case, obviously, a little bit more of the suburban slash bedroom community, but one that still values its heritage. So knowing, for us as a team, knowing that you are starting off with kind of a divide on where you want to go in terms of housing, probably in terms of economic development that goes hand in hand with housing, that's really valuable to us as we think about those communication tools and methodologies that Remy described, that Overunder is so good at, and then bringing in the data and the perspective that RKG and my firm can bring to that. I think those transition periods can be, you know, really scary for communities, but also lead to something incredibly valuable as people come to consensus over what they value and the process for moving forward. And I can't see my colleagues, so anything else you all would like to add?
I think you hit the nail on the head, Emily. I think that we're excited about this project precisely because this is such a moment of transition. I think this is an amazing time to be having the conversation that you're having through this process. And I think that, you know, between the ways that Overunder brings, the communication that Overunder brings to this process, and the really data focused approach that RKG and INSS bring, you know, we can marry those two worlds and help people understand not just, you know, what they're facing, but also what the trade offs are. I think that's really one of the wonderful things about our team, is that Overunder, of course, can help you understand exactly what the physical changes might be and what those trade offs might be. And between Emily and us at RKG, we can help you understand exactly what's feasible and what sacrifices you might have to make to get what you want. So I think, absolutely on board with what Emily says.
And what, you know, what 40B could look like. There's no one, you know, it can be done in different ways. So part of what we could do is sort of offer alternatives to that.
Super. Thank you for that. Mr. Wels, Mr. Welsmer, anything?
No, nothing that, you know, no, I don't have anything to add to this point.
Okay.
Same.
You've already touched upon it. My question has been about partnering. You've individually worked together, but have the three of you worked together before?
No.
No, okay.
We've worked with RKG quite a bit, and RKG have worked with INSS Associates.
Sure, sure. The other thing that I was asking is, I don't know, yeah, and Adam has been, it feels like a short time, but yeah, I guess it has been a longer time.
Sometimes it feels short, and sometimes it feels like a hundred years.
We, he gave a very good synopsis. I'm one of the ones that, I was born here decades ago as a farmer, and another member moved here two years ago. And Adam's been here with, for eight. This has got a large mix of people, and it's doubled in my lifetime, population. I'm still trying to figure out what that third question was I had.
May I?
Of course.
Just on the topic of farming, because it seems like that's an important one for you. As Emily had mentioned, we're often working together in more rural communities. And I think historically, when people think about economic development, they don't often think about farming as an opportunity. But we are increasingly seeing communities value that industry, value the heritage, value the identity that it brings, and also understand that there are avenues for economic growth through agriculture. And it might not always look exactly the way that it has for hundreds of years, but there are opportunities there. There are, agrotourism is one that we see in many rural communities, but beyond that, there are food production opportunities as well, food processing. There are ways to leverage the assets that you already have without sacrificing them. I think we understand that this is something that Lunenburg sees as who you are. And I think we want to make it clear that while we also understand that growth is important to achieve some of your other goals, supporting the industries that are here already is also incredibly important.
No doubt, I share.
And I would echo that. I live in a right to farm community, I'm working in a couple of other right to farm communities, and maybe some communities who would like to be right to farm communities, and absolutely echo with Chris that economic development can take many forms. And there is a way of thinking about how do you capitalize on the assets that you have, whether locally or regionally, and then taking from that, how best to plan for them in terms of land use, in terms of your zoning regulations, how that can help to not just protect, but create incentives for the type of development, whether economic or housing, or the type of preservation that you would like to have in your community.
Yeah. I can use their help in advertising.
So I have a question for you, if that's all right?
Of course.
I think we all have questions.
Question and answer.
You know, the master plan is sort of one of these things that one has to do every sort of periodically, but it's also an opportunity for you to get something out of it, right? It's two year process, it's going to take up a lot of your time and energy. What is it that you would like to get out of this process?
I'll tell you honestly, I would like to get something that was more useful than our last one.
Could you laugh at it?
Well, it's severely outdated. We, I wasn't part of producing the last one, but the public outreach is a challenge, and I'm sure every town says that. With the mix of people here, and the diversity in backgrounds, it's hard to get everybody together, let alone talking about something similar. And you're certainly not going to get the same input from, you'll get probably seven or eight answers out of 10 people, different. No, I'd like to see something that is representative, and as is clear, I am a farmer and what we call townie, I guess, I don't know, but I grew up in a place that doesn't exist anymore, and I need to accept that and move forward as best we can. I would like to do that in a way that doesn't discriminate against the farming community, you know, and when you poll people, everybody loves the farming atmosphere, the views.
Until March.
Until they get stuck behind the tractor, or until they have to open their pocketbook. So, you know, everybody talks about how much they love it, but nobody really does anything to help it. And certainly not the state. I remember my third question. Certainly not the state. And it seems, you know, I kind of seem like I'm talking out the side of my face, because we've had a resurgence in the Agricultural Commission, and it's due to some of the new people in town. So you just, you can't, there is no one fix for everything, and I long ago tried to stop labeling things and people, because they constantly surprise me. So I hope that answered your question, I guess, I don't know. Oh, what I'm looking.
So you're talking about the challenges that you've historically had in getting people to talk to each other and getting them to the same place. Are there existing town events that you do see people going to, where, you know, the whole town turns out, even if it's probably nothing planning related?
Not since COVID.
These guys are pushing my buttons. Yeah, we used to have a bonfire, okay? No more. We used to have a Grange. Well, I can't quite that back together since COVID hit either. We had a town fair, it lasted five years. You know, we've got, we've got individuals and groups of people that are in the works to get these things back. However, I mean, we are a product of our own dismantling, I think, because this town, I don't know how much of the history you went in, your history buff. And by the way, did I see a map, RK map, in your slide presentation? One of our historical maps?
Yeah.
The first one?
I thought so, yeah. Nice, good touch. We had, we had an electrical generating plant which turned into an amusement park, Whalen Park. I don't know if you, that's basically how this town grew, around the farms. We had, we had a bowling alley, we had roller skating rinks, we had archery, well, we still have, we had, we still have a driving range. We had so many different things that were amusements and things that people could go out and family things, and things that built community, and we don't have a lot of those anymore. So, and I can't blame the town, I can't blame the people, I can't blame the industries, but it's a combination. And I think that the town itself saw the opportunity for growth and took it, and decided not to continue to foster these other things. And that's my opinion, one of five members, well, four on planning, and one of 12,000 people in town. So that's the important thing, is getting the opinions. Some people, they got a mouthful of something, they won't say it. And other people, you can't, you can't get them to stop talking. And that's probably the nature in general of New England, but.
And that's part of why, I mean, New England has, I, you may guess from my name, I'm not originally from here, but I've been here long enough, that one of the things I really admire about New England is the kind of, the culture of the town meeting, et cetera. But that's not still truly representative of the totality of the population that lives within that community. And that's a phenomenon that exists almost anywhere we do any project. And part of, I think what we were alluding to initially is, how do you tease out those people who have a lot of opinions but aren't going to share them with you in that sort of public format? And how do you do it in other ways where it's not vitriolic, but.
Yeah, I can't.
Where people can disagree in a kind of, you know, friendly manner.
And I think sort of to the, to answer your question from the professional side, I think as reasonably close to consensus as one can get, and sort of transferring some of the latent energy that resides in the people who do participate and the people who don't, and driving, I mean, we have so many things that, like, we've, there's a, we have a handful of buildings downtown that the town owns that are underutilized or not appropriate for the use they're in, or just need some significant upgrade. And they've been working on what to do with these buildings longer than I've worked here. And I don't think we've gotten any further than, like, after the year or two after I started working here. And part of the problem is, as the politics turn over, there's no cohesive thought on where to go and what to do. And it always comes back to, oh, let's look at alternatives. And then they, it's just, it's churning, and so they're taking two steps forward and like nine back. And it's no one's fault, and it's not, but hopefully, a process like this can get people to have some agreement and at least give a guiding principle document that it's living, it's going to change, but that people can point to and say, no, but this is, this is why we're doing it this way. Because I think what happens a lot is, well, why are we doing this? Let's look at this. And it's something that may have been discussed or looked at that has fallen off the radar because it's been so long, and no one's going to go back and read minutes or watch old meetings. And this becomes a more genuine, legitimate document that people can point to and say, this is why. And I mean, that's across the board. I think the buildings is just an easy one to point to, because it sticks in a lot of people's craw.
You know, and that's part of why that chapter of goals, vision and goals is actually quite important, right? It's, it seems perfunctory, but in fact, getting there is one of the hardest pieces, because once you have a sort of consensus around those goals, there's a myriad of ways to solve for those goals, right, that can change.
But you need to know what your priorities are.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And they're not our priorities.
That is the value of this process, right, is it's getting people to help identify those priorities that are important to them and then taking the individual priorities and coming to that group consensus. I was on planning board for 10 years and was the chair of our master plan committee, you know, the town I was in at the time. And I think the value of having data that everybody has access to and can use to help inform the discussion is really a powerful part of a planning process like this because you all start working from the same pieces and you all start coming to a consensus collectively over those next steps. And that helps drive forward that inertia out of that you were mentioning earlier.
Thank you. Come up with anything yet?
No, I just want to reiterate your points for what we would want out of the master plan. I agree. I think that scaled growth, we've talked about that before, is really important. You know, I've only been here, it was two years in November, and we moved from, you know, the suburbs of Chicago. And the difference in community events and community structure, it's night and day. And yes, there aren't any big events. Like you said, we would love that. Like, that sounds great when people talk about what used to happen in Lunenburg. I'm like, wow, that sounds really great. It happened where we moved from because we lived in a larger community and, you know, we had aldermen and we were able to have that one-on-one communication with somebody in government. And I agree with your point. A lot of people have a lot to say, but they don't come to the meetings that are being held to say it. And they don't know who to email in town government if they have a question on things. And, you know, I'll get emails and I forward them to you because I don't know...
Usually what most people intend to do.
Yeah. So, and I think that's, you know, community engagement is very important and having the information be available to people in more than just the town website or more than just a random Facebook page that says it's Lunenburg, but it's not actually the Lunenburg Facebook page. You know, I've never seen a mailer for a community event. I've never had anything in my mailbox for anything other than like, hey, pay your dog registration fee, you know? And I think that's definitely underutilized, you know? For your experience with Lunenburg, you know, there has to be a variety of communication to reach everybody because it is a...it's a very varied community here, I think. That's all I got.
Mr. Willsmer, have you come up with anything?
Mostly just on this kind of last presentation, and I think it's something we've all been discussing here, is the...not necessarily like the specifications and how do you do things, but like, what is the community aspect of what's going on here? And I definitely... it's an interesting thing to hear about and how it kind of incorporates into everything else. And I like that.
Super. I did remember my last question, but I think we've gone...
State unfunded mandates.
Yeah, no, I remembered it. I wasn't gonna...oh, okay. So you guys get the pleasure of running late, I guess. So unfunded mandates. I am very...I am very much against them. The stormwater, the MS4 permit was unfunded mandate. But now, one of the more recent ones is MBTA communities. I don't know if you guys have any experience with that?
We have. Emily and RKG, we're working together on a number of those.
Yeah.
Technical assistance.
So I don't need to go into it. So how do you guys feel about those? I mean...
Chris, do you want to jump? Do you want me to do it?
You want me to profess my opinions on unfunded mandates first? Well, I think it's a challenge, obviously. You know, the state is facing an enormous crisis when it comes to housing. But at the same time, as we've already started talking about here, there are so many different ways to grow. And, you know, at this point, there's...I think Lunenburg has made the choice to be an MBTA community and not forego the funding opportunities that would come with passing of that...
Is that what you would prefer?
I don't believe that Lunenburg is one of the seven that have...
We're complying for now.
Okay.
Is, I guess, how I would put it.
So to...back to my point, I guess, is there are requirements. And we were talking about trade-offs before. If you choose not to follow those requirements, that comes at a price. But if you do choose to be an MBTA community, something that Emily and we have talked a lot about is the different ways to achieve the goal, right? There are many boxes that need to be checked in order to fulfill the requirements, but it doesn't have to look the same in every community, not even close. We, in our work so far, have really taken an approach that is tailored to each of those towns. We help them realize what the different possibilities are, both from a physical standpoint, from an economic and fiscal standpoint, in some cases. You know, it doesn't have to be 150 unit apartment buildings. It can be something that takes on the form of something that you're used to. It can be, you know, there are housing typologies across the region that we can draw from that are going to make new housing feel more appropriate to the community in which it's placed. And I think another thing to remember is that, and we say this to every community that we work with, it's zoning. It's not a requirement of development. Just the possibility...you just have to establish the possibility for that amount of housing. The likelihood of actually achieving that amount of housing is a completely different question that we can talk about from an economic standpoint. And, you know, it's probably going to be fairly rare for a town to meet or exceed that requirement based on the zoning that they establish.
I would just add to that that you've got a unique team here in that of all the firms that you probably could have had respond to you, RKG associates and NS associates have been working most closely with MHP, Mass Housing Partnership, and DHCD to help produce at least some of the tools that communities are going to need, including the compliance model and sample zoning. And the things that we run into is the problems and I mentioned before, the uncomfortableness, the fear of change or the concern about change that communities have do get wrapped up in, you know, I've driven along 95, for example, and seen a whole bunch of very tall multifamily housing that goes up, that went up in, say, 2013, and that is my image of multifamily housing. I don't want it in my community, for example. And with over-under's visualization skills, with RKG's ability to understand what the market demand is likely to be, you know, my understanding of how the zoning works, this ability to put those together and have a real community conversation of exactly what Chris said, what type of housing is appropriate for this community, what does Lunenburg need in terms of housing, what's maybe missing from your current housing stock, and how can the conversation that has to happen around MBTA communities actually help Lunenburg in its overall goals? And there aren't that many teams out there that have that particular capacity at this point. So, you know, I completely understand the state has created a requirement, and that is absolutely always a concern, right? It's how do we look at what the state has done in terms of what our own local needs are. But there's certainly a path for that discussion, and we can absolutely help you find what that path is for Lunenburg and how it helps the community as a whole to have that conversation.
I would say two things. I'm by, I guess, inclination, a contrarian, so I always think it's interesting to sort of try to look at things the other way. And the MBTA mandate, for example, how could you almost sort of jujitsu that or judo that, take something that you don't particularly like, but sort of move it in such a way that is actually doing other things for your community? I don't know what those are yet. I don't know what you like and what you don't like, but the idea of sort of using something that is coming at you and rolling it in a way that it works for you is something I've always found interesting as a kind of design challenge. The other thing I would say more specifically, you know, zoning is one tool in your toolkit. Another is design guidelines, right? You know, you can create guidelines, if we ever got to that point, you could create guidelines that, you know, potential developers would have to look at and would make their lives easier if they're trying to develop something in that area as a result. And we do that all the time in different communities, work with municipalities, to make the guidelines, kind of tweak zoning regulations in a way that works for that community.
And from a market standpoint, developers tend to appreciate design guidelines because it means that there are fewer surprises.
It makes their lives easier. The last thing a developer wants is to not know where the mines are in the field.
Or at least have them clearly...
And add that it makes it easier for the planning board, too.
Yeah.
Because they know where to...
I think someone's told the board that before.
It gives the planning board something, too.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we get that a lot. Super. So, anything else?
None for me.
Mr. Willsmer?
Aye.
I think not. Oh, he's back to muted. Probably not. Anything else from you folks? Any questions for us, you know?
I think this is, you know, something useful, representative, that's scaled growth, resonates.
Absolutely. And bringing the community in, maybe we can figure out a planning event that will kickstart some of the events that you've been missing post-COVID.
There you go. I'll bring the hay.
Perfect.
So I expect we'll probably discuss this a little more in our next meeting and probably in the next 30 days or so, inform the selected firm. And then from there, we'll negotiate contract and start dates. So, you know, I would expect that it will not go beyond the end of March.
Great.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Yes, of course.
Be careful out there in the snow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Night.
Yes, safe travels.
Where did it start at? Did it start yet?
I suppose.
I thought it was like 10.
It hadn't by the time we came in.
Okay, that's good.
No. All right. So that was a fun experience. Yeah, I'm not used to being a...
Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Comprehensive permit. You got anything to say about our Pondview Commons?
No, they're on the way to hack.
Same thing as last time.
Yeah. So, I mean, we won't hear anything for a bit.
Months?
Probably.
Okay. GIS hours for conservation?
Yep, this was the request of the Chair of Conservation. I neglected to put it on the last agenda, so here it is, to authorize the use of those eight hours as a in-kind donation against the Trails grant that they're applying for.
Sure. And I think we did discuss it briefly at the last meeting.
We did. It appeared that the board was willing to endorse that.
More than willing, but just was curious as to, would they be beneficial for us? And I wasn't able to think of anything.
I don't think they would be because, I mean, all the firms that we would deal with tonight have their own GIS capabilities, and trying to negotiate eight hours of outside help into that would be more cumbersome than passing them on to conservation and just paying for those eight hours.
All right. Mr. Willsmer, were you involved in that discussion last meeting? You were?
I was here for it, but I'm not really sure what the use of GIS between the departments, and so I didn't have much to contribute.
Okay. So it's something that we've done before, and we don't seem to find a use for them. So I would entertain a motion, I guess, to avail our GIS hours to Conservation Commission.
I would motion to give the GIS hours to the Conservation Commission.
And I will second that.
Excellent. This year, doesn't matter. That's good enough for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Good enough from him, good enough for me. Further discussion, rule call, vote, all in favor, Mr. Willsmer?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
And I for myself, thank you for using them, Conservation. Driveways and entrances. I got so caught up in catching up with this that I didn't do anything about that.
And I told you, I had put together a proposal, and I'm still working on that.
Okay.
Okay. Minutes approval. I would accept a motion. I would accept any manner of motion.
I would motion to approve the minutes of the planning board meeting on February 13, 2023, as well as the minutes for the February 13, 2023, for 1325 Massachusetts Avenue.
There, second?
Yes, I will second that.
Super. Any discussion? Rule call, vote, all in favor, Mr. Willsmer?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
And I for myself, minutes are approved. Open space ad hoc committee. I was not able to make that last meeting, and I think it was before our last meeting. So that's the second time I've said that I didn't go. Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee, I think, is the same boat. I don't think they've met, and I did miss the meeting before the last time we met. So I'm sorry not to be able to give you any update on either one. Yeah, you don't sit down in open space, do you?
I do not.
Agricultural Commission, we did meet. We had a discussion about our market managers. We bid farewell to both of the managers, unfortunately. So we're kind of struggling. The membership itself is going to try to handle managing the market. If there's anybody that would like to step forward and help us manage the market, you'd be more than greatly appreciated. That basically was the majority of the discussion at our last meeting was how are we going to manage without managers? How are we going to manage? How are we going to make this work? That's pretty much that meeting. Capital Planning Committee is Mr. Brenner?
Yes.
Economic Development Committee?
Mr. Brenner.
Mr. Brenner. Stormwater Task Force?
That's me. We did meet, and we got an update from our DPW director on the, I guess, the allocation of the budget to specific projects. We also talked about, I don't have my notes with me, so we also talked about skipping the next meeting, but we're ending up going to have it in case there's anything that we want added to the town caucus. I believe it was...
It's the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're right on. We need to do a demonstration BMP.
Yes.
As part of the permit. And the DPW director indicated that he didn't ask for capital funding and doesn't necessarily have funds to do it. Selectman Dwyer sits on the committee and recommended that perhaps if some cost estimates could be brought forward, he could bring them to the select board and request ARPA funding to install the BMP, to design and install it, most likely at the high school, in order to comply with the permit.
Wouldn't you want to design something that's useful as well as educational?
Well, I think... Well, I think there are probably areas in the high school where it could be useful. There are some drainage issues there. We talked about the potential for a synergistic relationship between the horticulture program at the high school and the installation of a rain garden that could be used in conjunction with science classes and a long-term maintenance project for the biology and horticulture program.
Horticulture program, is that new?
Oh, there's a giant greenhouse on the back of the high school.
Yeah, okay, I guess that was my next snide comment, is are they allowed to use the greenhouse? Because when the Agricultural Commission asked if we could help them in any way, they said, no, we're not growing anything. It's all cut flowers. No growing vegetables. So, you know, I'm happy to see that they've turned a leaf, apparently, but anyways.
And again, I don't have, that was just, that was the topic of discussion. There hasn't been any real conversation as to getting to that point, but.
Interesting, horticulture. Okay. Thank you. Anything else on Stormwater?
No.
No.
MRPC?
Have not met, and neither has MJTC.
Okay, that's pretty quick. I gotta write it down or I'll forget it. That works. Director's items.
Town meeting warrant is open till the 20th of March. We do have a, an individual who will probably come to the next meeting to discuss a potential article for the board in reference to the addition of self-storage as a use to the use table with the definition. This individual came to see me today. I recommended that, I can't just add it, that it would be up to the board or citizen petition, and so he asked to come and speak to the board at the next meeting. So get yourself storage hats on. Town Caucus will be on the 27th, which is in direct competition with this board, which is, if you want to be on the ballot, that's the place to be and to be seen. And then we had talked about the DLTA Second Call for Proposals. I'm still not coming up with a project that I think is going to fit into what we're currently working on that would get that funding, but we have a little bit of time, so if the board wants to shoot me thoughts or ideas, we can, we can discuss those at the next meeting.
So that's district, local, technical assistance?
Yes. Essentially, it's free work from the Regional Planning Agency, paid for by the state. But it tends to fall within very specified silos, and you do have a copy of the information in your OneDrive, and it had been sent by email previously.
Okay. On the, on what it provides?
What's that? Yeah, it talks about what projects qualify.
Qualifying projects, yes. All right. So meeting schedule, 6:00 PM, March 13th, March 27th. So we can, we can discuss it now, we can discuss it at our next meeting, but we need to discuss what we're going to do about caucus. At least, at least Mr. Willsmer needs to run. You're up, basically. And I think, I think he was the only one this year? Because he needs to be.
Yes, because he's, he's finishing out the term, and the term that he's finishing out did end this year anyway, if I'm not mistaken.
So that would probably be the only one?
Yes. Unless Mr. Torgerson, between now and then, resigns.
Oh, there's five of us, it's a five-year term, so.
It's one a year.
Okay, good. So there is no.
Because it's not Mr. Torgerson's year this year.
It could be.
Well, that he would have to resign. His term ends in '24.
I guess that's where it was coming.
And I do know that we should have a site plan approval coming in for the 27th.
Okay, so we can't just skip the meeting?
I mean, you can, because I can just tell that individual that there's no meeting. They haven't filed yet.
We could, so we have options. We can, we can skip the meeting, we can limit the agenda so that we can get out before 7:00.
We could shift the agenda earlier, if that's something that the board can do.
Sure.
As far as, you know, starting at 5:00 instead of 6:00 in order to give you two hours. It is a fairly minor site plan approval, and it's an existing building, so there isn't a lot of technical data to it, but it will be an actual filing.
Not a request not to file.
Correct.
Gotcha. All right. So anything in the ongoing items?
No. There's stuff in there, but it's all stuff we've either talked about or there isn't an update on.
Okay, so I jumped to that before we finished discussing our March 27 meeting. Does anybody feel strongly, one way or another, about anything to do with caucus?
I don't. I mean, obviously, we need to attend it. I don't know if it would make sense if Mr. Brenner is back at the next meeting, to make a decision then on the, on March 13th?
Sure.
Would that be enough time?
Yeah.
I mean, we'll have, we'll be advertising, so this individual will file on Monday.
Gotcha.
And I'll have to advertise for the 13th and the 20th.
Okay.
So if the board chooses to not meet on the 27th, that would be potentially an issue.
Okay.
But if the board chooses to limit the agenda or say, we're just going to hear this one thing, or we're going to meet at 5:00 o'clock, then that works.
Okay.
Mr. Willsmer, anything?
The, most of those options work. Like, I've got no problem starting at 5:00 if we want to run early. Either way, you know, I've got to be at the Town Caucus in order to do this, continue doing this job, so that's going to be my priority. But everything else, if we make it work, I am here to make it work.
Yeah.
Okay, well, technically, you don't. You could pull papers and get 50 signatures. But I've always, I've always found that spending a few minutes with your local residents is something that's fairly unique, is always a lot easier than getting 50 signatures.
Yeah, definitely. No, this is by far the preferred option.
Very good. Okay, so at least one of us needs to be at caucus, feels they need to. All right, I guess we can wait till next meeting to make a decision. Yeah? So that's, that's about it. Public comment? Any public with? No?
Nope.
Any board comment concerns?
Nope.
All right, 10:00. And I did say that we were coming back to it, the Holman Street Stormwater Permit Tri-party Agreement. This can't keep happening. So that was another unintended consequence, was the displeasure of the current resident. And that was new to me tonight. I mean, I understood the unintended consequence of the bumping back of the closing. I'm glad we were able to make it work. I'm skeptical on, what was it, $8,000 per lot? On that being able to cover the required amount of work, but hopefully the contractor finishes it and it's not an issue. And in that case, then it would just be returned, right? This is, this is going to require some internal things that I'm not. Well, okay, so basically, there are some things that need to be addressed here. What we need to do is find a way to close this loop that allows for the oversight to, something needs to, something needs to be codified in a manner such that this oversight is minimized or limited or eliminated potentially. And I'm open to suggestions, recommendations, and we can get an agenda item to discuss those recommendations, I think would probably be the best course of action.
That's what, I would need time to.
Yeah. And I thought about it, because I did, I visited Adam today, and we had a discussion about it. And you asked me to email you the things that I had mentioned, and I got home, and it wasn't until about 2:00 that I could actually email you, and I'm like, he wasn't talking about tonight. You weren't talking about tonight, right?
I just want to have a written record so I understand what your basis is, so that I'm not trying to, A, jot it down, or B, interpret what you said, and I can then frame what I'm putting together. Whether it was today, or next week, or whatever, as long as I have it with enough time to be able to digest and collect what you're looking for, or, you know, think about and put into, you know, a practical application, something that I think would address it.
So just to be, just to be clear, the issue here is something outside the purview, no, outside the ability of the board. So this is a permit that the membership signs off on, and something outside of our control is happening in town that creates these issues. This is not the first time, and unless we do something, it will not be the last, as far as I can tell. It's detrimental to the citizens, it's detrimental to the developers, it's detrimental to us as members. It frustrates us and wastes our time. So it would behoove us to work with the powers that be and come up with the most effective fix. Yeah? Sound good? So that's that. And I think that brings us to the end. We don't even have to vote to continue to pass 1030.
Nope. But you do need to vote to adjourn.
We do.
I would vote to adjourn.
You would move to adjourn?
I would move to adjourn. That's what I mean.
Very good.
I will second that.
Excellent. And I will ask if there's any further discussion about adjourning, and then it will go by rule call. Mr. Willsmer, all in favor? Mr. Willsmer?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you all.
And Tim, I'll email you about coming to.